All right, the time is now six o'clock. I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Galt City Council for March 15th, 2022. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic emergency, we conduct, we continue to handle our city council meetings a little differently than we have in the past. I'm now going to ask our city manager, Mr. Heinz, to give a brief explanation to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everyone. Although this meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted in person, today's agenda states that we are also using audio-only teleconference options, which allows the public to provide live public comment remotely. Members of the public may use the Zoom link described in the agenda to enter the webinar via audio only, and they should be able to use the Raise Their Hand feature option to speak when the mayor announces the time for general public comment, or when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their mind and do not want to speak. Members of the public may also use the call-in feature described in the agenda. You may just listen if you prefer, but if you would like to speak when the mayor announces the time for public comment, you may do so by pressing star nine at that time. We request that all speakers, in person or on phone, provide their name and address when they are called on to speak, but doing so is not required. Today's agenda states that residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting, which will be distributed to the city council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting. That concludes my comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. I will now call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Yeah.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. If everyone would please join me in a silent prayer, followed by a flag salute, and if you would all please do me a favor and keep the young lady who was struck last night, if you could keep her and her family in our prayers tonight, thanks. Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of America, to the Constitution, and to the Constitution itself. Thank you, everyone. Tina, can you please read our replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will air Friday, March 18th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, March 19th at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item B, Agenda Approval Additions and/or Deletions. Do I have anything from the council? Okay. Move on to item C, Presentations. Presentation tonight will be the Recycling Recognition Award for Cal Waste. Tina?
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. I was before you guys last year to present the Recycle Recognition Award to spawns. And I'm here tonight to present the last two recipients for 2021. One could not be here with us tonight, but they've already been given their award. So, the latest recipients of the Cal Waste Recycle Recognition Awards are El Rodeo and Express Typing Graphics. Both businesses have received the news of their alkalis in early December. El Rodeo consistently has clean recycling in their container, and they are early adopters of our food waste recycling program. Food waste recycling laws have been in place for businesses since 2018 through Assembly Bill 1826. The threshold for which businesses must comply has shifted since the original amount of four cubic yards of waste generated per week to two cubic yards. Businesses such as El Rodeo utilize recycling programs for the sake of their community, which makes compliance with state mandates all the easier. So I'd like to applaud them and recognize them for their efforts. I know they cannot be here tonight, but thank you. The second recipient, which is here tonight, Express Typing Graphics utilizes unconventional tactics to dispose of their shredded paper waste. They provide it to a local worm farmer. I believe it's PJ Dunn Worm Castings Red Worms. They're located off of Kennefick Road in Galt. They have had success finding a solution for their waste. Due to shredded paper's minuscule size and feather-like weight, it is not possible to recycle it alongside other unsoiled paper products. The shredded paper that incorrectly gets put into other people's recycling and ends up in the Cal Waste smurf, ends up getting trapped in other recyclables. We would like to applaud Express Typing Graphics for their innovative mindset that they were able to find a way to recycle the waste that would otherwise be buried in the landfill. So if I could call them up to receive their award. So I'd like to present you guys with the Recycle Recognition Award for your tireless efforts in recycling and sustainability. Tony and Dan. Maybe to just give a little brief about your, how you came across the worm farmer and how it came to be?
We met, we met Michael Dunn a few years ago when he was at a Rotary meeting, and he told us about his worm farm. And a couple of years later, we did some printing for him, and we found more things about it, and then we ended up talking about our shred and how we got rid of it. And he offered to take it from us. I thought that was a great idea. I don't have to throw it away, and his worms eat it, and it goes back to nature. So it worked out.
Thank you, guys, so very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Beth, and congratulations to El Rodeo and Express Typing Graphics. Thank you very much, guys. Have any council comments before I move on? All right, going on to item D, Public Comment. Tina, can you read a statement, please?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency, public comments may be submitted, as noted above, via the options listed on the first page of the agenda. Written public comment may also be submitted via email prior to the meeting to pubcom@cityofgalt.org by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting, which will be distributed to city council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting, but will not be read out loud.
We do have one speaker card, Alexis Gold from the Galt Youth Commission.
Welcome, Alexis.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm Alexis Gold from the Galt Youth Commission. I just wanted to give a quick update on what the commission's up to and what we're going to be doing in the future. So last week, we helped to run a fashion show at the Career and, or the College and Career Fair, where we presented ideas on what you should wear to an interview and what you shouldn't be wearing. In doing that, we got a chance to reach out to the Teen Center and the Interact Club, and we got to meet other youth in the community. Also coming up, we have recruitment open, so if anybody here knows any teens that would be willing to join the commission, it's a great opportunity to meet new people and obviously get public speaking. And then we also have a scholarship open for seniors. That is, I think, $250, and it is due the 14th. And then finally, we have our, the Extravaganza and the Kite Day coming up, and we're making baskets for a raffle, I think. Where, and if anybody has any donations or would want, or knows anybody that would make a donation to that, we're doing those the 9th. And that's about it.
All right, thank you, Alexis. Does anyone have any questions for Alexis while she's at the podium?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And for those of you that are watching, as she said, if you are a parent or a student in high school and would like to join the Youth Commission, please reach out to our city clerk. We'd love to have you aboard. Do we have any additional public comment in the room?
No more written comment.
Okay, if you are watching via the Zoom webinar, you can raise your hand online if you wish to speak during public comment, and if you are using the phone-in feature, you can press star nine. Do we have any hands raised or callers?
No hands raised or callers.
Okay. I'm going to allow a few more moments, should someone wish to speak, and then we will be closing the public comment period. Okay, do we have any hands raised or callers?
No more public comment.
Okay. Then we will be closing public comment and moving on to item E, Reports by City Council Members on Regional Boards, Commissions, and Committees. We'll start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Mr. Mayor, nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. I messed this up last week, but Mr. Papino.
No, I haven't had any meetings since our last council meeting either.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilman Vandenberg.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Councilman Lozano.
We did have a SACOG Transportation Committee meeting, but most of that, when formalized, the Executive Board meeting will be taken up, and I'll report out then. That is going to be this Thursday, and so at our next council meeting, I'll report out on those items.
All right, thank you, sir. I myself attended a Youth Commission meeting, and as Ms. Gold mentioned, some of the things were discussed on that. And I attended the Sacramento Homeless Policy Council meeting. It was the first meeting that we have had since I was appointed to that position. It was highly attended. It was a Zoom meeting. We had over 100 people present, I think over a dozen panelists, and a lot of things were discussed. Basically, the intent is to kind of come up with ideas, share ideas amongst municipalities and government officials on ways that we can deal with homelessness as a larger issue. Some of the things that were shared that I was very happy to hear was the discussion of trying to get agencies to work together more smoothly, Caltrans on the roadways, and the county outside of our city limits, and of course, city to city. So that was discussed, and there was some ideas. We covered a large range of topics, but it was a good, it was a good kickoff, and we have another meeting. Our next meeting is going to be in June, so hopefully we'll have some ideas brought back formally at that time. So that's all I have. Move on to item F, our Information Consent Calendar. I'm going to go ahead and open the public comment period for this. Should you like to speak on the consent calendar, you can raise your hand on Zoom, star nine on the phone, or you can fill out a speaker card. It is recommended that items one through five be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. Do I have anything from council on the consent calendar? Okay. The items looking for approval this evening will be number one, Minutes of the Regular Meeting of March 1st, 2022. Item two is receive and file warrants for period ending March 2nd, 2022. Item three is AB 361, Resolution Making Findings Necessary to Continue to Conduct Brown Act Meetings by Teleconference. Item four is the Treasuries Report for period ending January 2022, and item five, the Annual 2030 Galt General Plan and Housing Element Progress Report for 2021. Do I have any public comment on the consent calendar?
No public comment.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion to approve these five items.
Moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Consent calendar is approved five to zero. Moving on to item G, Scheduled Matters and Notice of Public Hearing. Do we have any this evening?
No public hearings.
Okay. Moving on to item H, our regular calendar. First item's going to be from our city manager's office, and the subject is the approval of new job classifications and salary ranges for police captain, senior accountant, and budget analyst. Mr. Heinz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, if you'll indulge me tonight, I am going to essentially take items H1, 2, and 3 sort of together, and/or parts of H3 together. So what I wanted to do tonight was cover all of the positions that are being affected or requested by this particular budget act. For the folks at home, I just want to make sure everyone's clear that our annual budget is merely a spending plan, and we draft that spending plan on a biennial basis, and then we come back every year and we revise that plan on a formal basis. Now, good practice dictates that we should also, within the fiscal year, come back and look at that plan and see how we're doing and revise it once again. And that's what we're doing tonight. And so we adopted the 21-22 spending plan last June. We're now coming back and looking at the actuals, revenues, and expenditures, and coming up with projections for the end of the fiscal year. And so that's the exercise that we're in the midst of right now. In addition to updating the numbers, we're also looking at approving new job classifications. We're also looking at unfreezing certain positions that were frozen a few years ago. And so that's what we'll, that's what we'll be doing here. So I want to make sure that I lay out sort of what the plan is for everyone, so if there's folks online who are looking to make public comments, I want to make sure that they have context for what we're doing here. So let's go ahead and start. Am I, am I controlling this, or am I, or are you?
I can get the clicker for you.
Who's got the clicker?
It's over here.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All righty. And before we get started here, there are some folks I need to thank. I need to thank Matt Boring, who was our new finance director, and he sort of came in and just went right into the fire with preparing this budget. Carlos Solario, who sits behind him, our Budget and Revenue Manager, these two gentlemen, yeoman's effort pulling this together. This city, at least based on my time here and based on my research, has never seen this diligence, this level of diligence when it comes to bud, when it comes to budget. And, and so I'm pretty proud to be associated with these two gentlemen, so thank you. And then we also have Stephanie Van Steine, who will also be educating us on some of the positions and some of the requirements, and so if you have any questions of her, she's there. She's our HR Director. Of course, the other directors are all here to provide insight as to these positions. And of course, our city attorney is there for legal advice as well. I get in trouble when I leave him out of the lineup. Yeah, let's just do it. All right, so as I mentioned earlier, we're going to talk about the establishments of, and reinstatement of classifications. Item H1 concerns the reestablishment or the establishment of a police captain, senior budget accountant, and budget analyst. Now, H1 is all about establishing the classification, setting up the classification in our system. H1 does not control the budget appropriation. We are merely setting up the position. H2 sets up the classification and duty statement for the litter abatement worker. H3 contains the appropriations for all of those positions above, and it contains reinstatement of a building official, facilities maintenance worker, and the financial analyst. Now, the twist with the financial analyst is that it will be underfilled as a budget analyst. So it's not a one-for-one, so we got to try to keep that in mind. Next slide, Tina. So let's start with the police captain, and our illustrious chief Kalinowski is here to supply any, any support regarding this position that council may desire, but this position essentially establishes a rank above police lieutenant. It will act as the police chief in the absence of the chief. It ensures proper management, oversight of staff, training, and mentorship. Forty-two percent sworn staff, less than five years' law enforcement experience, so we've got a, we've got a young group. Comparative cities have a police captain or commander rank, and the financial impact for the vacancies is covered in the midterm budget, and the separate items presented to the council this evening, on, this evening, in H3. The salary schedule that's proposed is below, and that's the police captain. And again, we're merely looking to establish the position with H1, and we are looking to fund the position with H3. Next slide, please. Then we have the senior accountant, which establishes the senior lead level in the accounting class series. This will focus on the complex financial, federal, and state reporting that our folks have to do. This is supported by the city's auditors, immensely supported by the city's auditors, who are, visit us once a year and place a lot of requirements on us to adhere to GASB recording, reporting requirements and various things, and so this position will be key to that. This will also, this position was also recommended by a consultant that we brought in last fall, who did an overview of the workload in our finance department. The salary schedule is proposed below. The next position is the budget analyst, and so the support for the budget, this will support the budget and revenue divisions. This will also provide support for the departmental budget needs. Our departments are programmatic folks, and that's where their focus is. Where they need the help fiscally and where they don't have it in-house, the expectation is that this budget analyst will be there to lend a hand. We'll replace the financial analyst position function that was frozen, and this position is benchmarked at the Administrative Analyst 2 Job Classification here at the city. The proposed wage scale is below. Next slide. Litter abatement worker was city council-directed staff on December 21st to start to develop the specifications for this position. Council earmarked $40,000 per year for this position utilizing ARPA funds. We developed a job description, which is in Exhibit A, and the proposed salary benchmarks to a Parks Worker 2, and Public Works will be the home department for this position. Part-time and at-will job, job classification. Part-time employees work 20 to 36 hours per week. Total compensation costs, including salary, benefits, and pension. And if they work more than 1,000 hours per year, they'll, we'll have to enroll them in CalPERS. Total compensation over $36,000 per year. And as you can see, the wage is below. Startup costs include the purchase of a city vehicle, the employee's safety PPE, and we also inserted a grid here that shows the different cost. And these costs are already baked in or included in the mid-year budget. And so those are the new positions where we're looking for council to approve the job classification. In addition to those positions, there are frozen positions that we are looking to have reinstated. This is the original six positions that were frozen. Based on my conversations with the department directors, it was decided that we would bring back the financial analyst, the building official, and the maintenance worker 1. I would like to add, this note at the bottom, that these, that should be funds were not cut from the budget. They were merely shifted to non-departmental, which is another budget within the city's budget, as a contingency measure. We were starting to enter the COVID era, and so I can understand why those dollars were left in the budget. I wouldn't necessarily do it that way, but that's the way it was done. The contingency measures were not utilized as of today, and so we're going to recommend in H3 that the funds from these frozen positions be shifted back to the general fund balance, and as these positions are brought back, it becomes a measure that has to come before council before they're reinstated, just like the three that we're doing tonight. Next slide, please. And the first position that we're going to, that we propose to bring back is the building official, and our Community Development Director, Craig Hoffman, will speak to the necessity and the methodology for bringing back this position.
All right, good evening, council members. Back in 2019, it was kind of, there was a lull in development. We had just lost the building official, and there was the thought, instead of rehiring that person to go out to contract, we already had a four-leaf contract to help us with building inspection, plan review, and so the thought was you could bring that person, a person onboard and, and help out with the building official position. There was a cost savings back in 2019, 2020, in the beginning of 2021, and you see on this slide where you see the residential permits. We were light in 2018, 2019, and 2020 with the amount of residential permits that we were issuing. Also, you see in the next column, building permits in 2019, 771, 662, it was light. We were able to utilize a bit, a building official part-time. Some of those building permits, a hot water heater is a building permit. A new house is a building permit. A water heater takes one inspection. A house takes like 12. So although the permits may show they were light, it's the type of permits that we were inspecting. Could we go to the next slide? So what would a Galt building official cost? Those identify the various steps. That's all-in cost. That's benefits. So what will we be able to hire a building official at? I don't know. Until we go out there and see who's on the market, I think there are several local people that are interested in this position, but it doesn't take very long to where we start hitting the numbers of the four-leaf contract, where, again, that building official, that's a full-time position. That's a position that's going to mentor staff, something that we've been greatly lacking in the last three years. We've had a turnover in our permit tech. We have a building inspector that wants to grow, and the only way you get that mentoring is by having in-house staff. Right now, we're somewhere in between the 24 and 32 hours a week, closer towards the 32 hours. So you see our cost for the building official, they've elapsed where we could be if we just had a city staff. I guess I'll leave that, and if there's any questions that I can help with.
We'll center up there, Craig. I think we can ask the council if anybody has any questions for Craig, but we might have some back and, coming back and forth for some of you.
Sure.
So, thank you for explaining that, just for those watching. So we currently contract out this service, and if I'm reading this correctly, and based on what you explained to me when we spoke yesterday, you guys are projecting an annual cost of somewhere between 212 and 240 or something like that?
Sure, somewhere between that 32 and 36 hours a week. And that still does not get you a full-time staff. That means that we're missing out on Fridays. We're missing out- We're missing out on that redundancy. It, it's, it's tough when you have one building inspector and you have one permit tech, and although I don't let them, but sometimes they ask me for vacation. They actually wanna be sick. Unacceptable, I say. But what this does, it provides us some redundancy, so you're providing that service. Community development, we're a customer-based service. In the minute you don't provide the level of service the customer needs, they go someplace else. So providing that service is a big deal.
Well, I, I personally, I mean, looking at this particular, just when it, when we've, when I've looked through these, these positions tonight, I look at each one in a silo. I don't, not looking at them as a whole. I kinda look at each one and I, um, and, um, so with this particular one, it makes sense, obviously, projection of the money. Um, but I do obviously have questions. Um, what, what, um, what is, what is the projection for permits, um, currently? Or you can give me some just ballpark numbers and what?
Can we go back to the other slide? If we could, Tina?
This doesn't go back. It's not working at all. Okay. I'm just gonna go through real quick then.
Sorry, I should have this memorized.
And Mr. Mayor, we will be going back through this slide deck again. I just wanted to get through all of these positions.
There we are.
And, um, we'll take it from the top, and we'll start with the first position, and then we'll go through it with council questions. So there will be an opportunity for council here.
Okay. I'm just trying to clarify. I'm ca- I'm a little confused though, so, uh, by combining these items, I mean, I, I mean, are we gonna skip around and once, all the, I mean, I'm just a little confused by breaking, put them together like this, cause I don't know, to, to say we're gonna create the position, and then later we're gonna say this is how we fund it. Well, I think they're, they, they're hand in glove. I mean, you don't create one without funding it, so I, I just confused on how that's gonna work.
Well, council actually has the option tonight of creating it and not funding it. You have that option. You're not committed to that. All we're asking for in this first action is the approval of three job classifications.
Okay. I can save my questions, and if towards the end, I just was gonna ask, he's up there.
Understood.
I was gonna say, with building permits, we definitely saw a drop in 2020, and these are calendar year, uh, permits. So when you see 2020 really took a hit because of COVID, really picked up in 2021, that went kinda hand in hand with the amount of new residences we had. And so far, this 192 permits through yesterday. So we still haven't hit the end of the quarter, and I've got about 20 more permits that wanna go out. So I expect in this year, we're gonna be somewhere around 840 permits with more houses than we did last year. The permit numbers are just going up. It's, our building department is not a part-time department. It's a full-time department.
Alrighty. Thank you, sir. And there'll be, just stick around, I'm sure there'll be questions in a little bit.
I, I have a question.
Okay.
If you don't mind. I, I'm just curious, uh, you know, you talked about the past, which is great. What, what do you, are your projections for 23, 4, 5, 6 years, you know?
We have the amount of land developments in place to continue doing somewhere between 119, 140, 150 homes sustained.
Right.
We have the notch annexation. We have, uh, Eastview. We have all the projects we approved with Cardoza Two coming online. We have a lot of development lined up, and we're seeing a demand within the Sacramento region for houses.
Right, and, uh, you know, the water heater permits, those are gonna be fairly consistent, but, and that's why I ask, so this position, essentially, the way I see it, is kind of paying for itself, uh, because of what the future of GALT already has lined up. There's not like we can vote any of this down, or it's gonna come up in front of council. These are things already in the pipeline.
Correct.
It's just, it's just a matter of building it out, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And the one thing that the building official, uh, position does, it does plan checks. It does inspections. So instead of paying a contractor, a four-leaf to do those, you start doing those in-house, the money stays in-house, and it absolutely pays for itself. All right? Okay?
Okay.
Craig?
Sure.
Uh, just very, right now, you know, the reason we are taking that position, we froze, you know, we are bringing back because, uh, due to the growth, right?
Correct.
And what's the growth right now, around seven to eight percent, right?
It, the growth this year, if you looked at?
Six to seven, I believe, right? Six to seven percent?
Growth?
Mm-hmm.
No, with, i- if you took a look at that 119 new residences, with our population, 26,000 people, 81 homes is a 1% growth rate. So at 119, if you're at 121 houses, that's a, about a 1.5, if you're up at?
And, and, and what's the average for last 10 year?
Oh, 0.86.
0.86. Okay, the, my next just, uh, information, I did agree with you with your statement. You really did, your staff is very thin. And when, back in 2019, when we froze that position, if all my colleagues know, I asked the same question, uh, director, and I asked it, did you feel comfortable to freezing that position? And he said yes. Uh, and the other thing is, like, and we thinking, it's the growth can be continued, but there is lot of uncertainty at this time due to different, uh, kinda things, like there is inflation, there is, uh, we just get out of COVID. I'm not talking about your position, I'm talking about just a broad statement with all the positions. And we have a concern with the growth, if something with the inflation and it's with the future economy. I did agree with you, you are very thin staff, I know, but that's kind of my concern, not just your position with every?
Sure.
Position we are asking tonight.
Sure.
And thank you for the explanation.
Okay. All right. I, I would like to piggyback on something, just to kind of, so it, my thought was when Jay made a comment about, sorry, um, I'm looking at the, uh, revenue variances in it. I think engineering, plan check, inspection fees, that would be what we're talking about, the money you guys collect for?
Engineering? I think that's Public Works typically. Yeah, that's?
I'm trying to find the, what I, let me, I'll just cut right to a question. So what do you think, like, we're looking at 192 permits, you're saying you, you project based on what's going on, you know, it could be in that neighborhood. So I'm just wondering, like, what's the, moving forward with the, if we create this building, um, building official position, what, and, 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 and I know you can't hold the exact number, but just ballpark, what do you think the, the amount of permits is our break-even point that we're, that we're basically covering the cost of creating that position by the revenue that that position creates? Would you say it's 100 permits, 200, like, I mean?
Oh, uh, it's probably when we start seeing the jump from, uh, where you see the 771 and the 662, as we start to get 800 permits a year. At some point in time, you have to create that redundancy. Again, I've got one building inspector. On Monday, we got 34 call-ins for inspections. One person can't do that. Tina, can we go to the next slide? For me, it's, if I'm hiring a step-three building official at $160,000, and they're here 40 hours a week, and they provide mentoring, and they provide all the intangibles, it only takes a, a four-leaf contract at 24 hours to equal the same value, but it's not the same value. That's three days a week. That's not?
Yeah, and I?
A full-time position.
And I, and I get that, you know, we froze, you know, obviously, three of us up here were part of those, those, those budget cuts, and, you know, at the time, you know, there was not much growth coming, going on, so it made sense.
Sure.
And I get that. I, I understand that. But also, um, and, and it obviously appears that we have the workload currently, and, you know, your projections seem to, uh, be consistent with that this position will be, you know, utilized moving forward. Obviously, none of us can project, like, 10 year, I mean, you be, you could project all along, we just don't know, like, outside of a few years. So, um, obviously, it makes sense money-wise. I think, um, what I just want to remind, and this is not stating that I'm opposed to the position, I just want to state that the difference, though, in contracting, even if you spend 240 on a contractor versus 160 for that position, if you get into a situation where things slow and it becomes a position where you're not utilizing it, I mean, when you create a position, any of these positions, I mean, when we create a position tonight, we own that position, that, for the life. I mean, these positions you're talking about, once we create that and it's funded, you know, PERS kicks in, all that, it's, we own it forever. And so that's why I think that you and other department has asked to contract things in certain instances, because you're, you're balancing that kinda thing. So I just wanna state that, and again, it's not, um, any, I'm not stating that in opposition to the position. It seems to make sense dollar-wise, but I only am quoting my reservations, and I think it seems kind of a, maybe what the vice mayor's concerns were a little bit when talking about these kinds of things, so I just wanted to say that. Anybody else have any questions for Craig while he's up there? I mean?
I just have a comment, if I may. Um, I, I would agree that, you know, we certainly don't wanna go into this process thinking that we're going to lay a position off, right, or lay a person off from a position. I totally get that, but, but I would state that if it makes sense for the department and, um, and it makes sense for the city and the customer service, I, I'd be in favor of it. If we need to come to the point, or, let's say, five years down the road, we hit a 2018 again, or 2019, and we have a vacant position like we had in your, in your shop, and we froze it, um, we certainly could bring that back and not be the same position. And I'll give you the example of what is being offered tonight as a, as, uh, you know, in the finance department, what's being offered in that position is actually eliminating, um, not eliminating, not reinstating a frozen position and bringing it back where, um, in a position that's needed at that time. And so it's gonna ebb and flow, I, I, I think, and, um, and so, uh, I appreciate the work that you've done with the contracting, uh, because it did make sense in 2019. Um, it be, you know, we were, we're in bad shape, and so, uh, now, um, it looks, uh, a little more promising at least, uh, where I don't think we're out of the woods yet, and I understand the mayor's concern, because we aren't out of the woods, and the vice mayor's concerned about, you know, inflation, and, and we, we don't know. Um, but, but I think that the market is probably gonna dictate what we, what we get, and, uh, hopefully, hopefully we get some folks, if, if approved, that we get, you know, some longstanding employees in our, in our city.
Consistency is a big?
It, especially, yes, especially in a customer service department like that.
Yeah. I can tell you as a four-leaf, they do an amazing job. In August, I will be here two years. I've gone through three building officials so far. Four-leaf, great company. We don't contract with the person. We contract with the company, and it's about relationships. And if you wanna do a contractor, you can, you get what you pay for.
Craig, let me ask you this. Reflecting back to this chart here about the, uh, excuse me, on the 2019, uh, I wrote it down, so I don't need to see this slide, but?
Sure, yeah.
771 permits in 19, 662, so on, those four years?
Sure.
From 19 to 22. Would you say, I'm, I'm assuming, based on the number of permits, uh, that we have, since 2019, have far exceeded the threshold of the $132,000 cost of the building official position?
Yes.
I would assume, for at least the last four years?
Yes.
Well, current, last three years, and then currently, we're on track to, as well this year.
I think a contract building official made a lot of sense in 2019 and 2020, and I would say that it made a lot of sense through about July of 2021, and all of a sudden, we just saw a, a jump. All of a sudden, you had Cardoza One coming onboard. You had, uh, Tim Lewis's project at Cedar Flat. You had, um, sorry, what am I missing? Veranda come onboard. So all of a sudden, you, you had developments that we didn't have before, you know, all the new residential. We are gonna be building, uh, residential here the next five years.
Yeah, and I, and with that, I just think it's important that although there's some, you know, some hesitation, um, you know, and thoughts about where we were at coming out of the pandemic and coming out of the last, you know, two years, that we can obviously reflect back on the last four years, or three, three and a half years, and say, well, we're in a pattern now. This isn't just us saying, oh, we're just really busy this year, so we need to get that position back. I mean, clearly, we've demonstrated at least, now again, projecting the future, we don't know. I mean, it's just an education, I guess, but, so I just wanted to state that for, it's just, this is me just talking out loud, or my brain's thinking right now, so.
Yeah. Uh, the one thing I wanna make it clear to the council, if I thought that this was a blip, if I thought it was just right now, I'd keep with a contract, but it's not right now. We're, we've, we've got too much on the horizon. We just, even if a, a portion of those develop, we're hitting numbers that are gonna keep my, uh, contractor at 32 to 36 hours a week, and that just doesn't financially make any sense.
I was gonna save the comment for later, but we'll get it out of the way now. Um, I was talking to a representative from Tykert, and they're getting ready to, uh, cut Curlyon through.
Yeah.
And, you know, we just, uh, had all the trees removed and getting ready for Walnut to go out. Even if the market crashes and housing prices go down, we're gonna be easily, for five years, exceeding this 40 hours.
Yes.
So, you know, I think that, you know, do the math between, uh, 243 plus, down to our top step at 168. Uh, we're money way ahead, even if, um, five years of growth is all we get.
Sure.
That's all.
All right. Thank you.
So the next position is the, uh, public works facility maintenance worker, and, um, since we're taking questions now, by the way, council members, we will go to the top of the slide deck, and we'll go through the same scrutiny for the other positions that were missed as these positions here. So, uh, public works director Mike Selling.
Uh, thank you, city manager. Good evening, mayor, council. Uh, so for the facilities maintenance worker, maybe start with a little bit of background. Back, um, 2019, 20, when, uh, we were facing a significant budget deficit, the then interim, uh, city manager, and I talked about this position, which had recently become vacant, and, uh, and so the agreement was that we would put it on the frozen list, and, uh, and then it would likely be one of the first positions back once the, uh, the budget, uh, you know, was back in order. At that time, uh, in the analysis that we did, this position was fully funded 100% by the general fund. And when I looked at it and what the position does, I saw that there was clearly a significant portion of the position that should be funded through the enterprise funds, so sewer, water, streets, uh, and some of the other funds, too. So anyway, that was the understanding that we had, and, and in working, uh, with Lorenzo in preparing this, uh, you know, and, and, and bringing up, you know, that understanding in the past, uh, that the budget has, you know, essentially recovered to the point where we could consider bringing this position back. And so again, with it, uh, and, and I estimate it's probably about two-thirds, uh, could be funded with those enterprise funds. So the general fund, uh, you know, portion would be about one-third, uh, funding the position. Uh, and then now we've, we've got, uh, ARPA, and, and ARPA can, uh, can essentially cover that general fund portion at least through 2026, as I understand it. Um, so anyway, uh, wanted to provide some of the information. We've currently have two full-time, uh, folks in the facilities maintenance staff, and, essentially, they've been, you know, since that time, just the two of them, they're pretty much just in a reactive mode, you know, putting out fires as things, you know, occur, things break, uh, things need to be repaired, replaced, you know, reach their life's, uh, life cycle or whatnot. So that's the essential, um, you know, mode that they've been in. Adding this position, these are some of the things that we could basically go back to and into more of a proactive or preventative maintenance type, uh, you know, uh, mode, if you will, rather than a re- mode, if you will, rather than a reactive, uh, repair mode. So just kind of listed several of the things there, uh, from routine inspections. That includes our HVAC boilers, uh, you know, various doors on all the buildings, moving gates at, at some of the facilities, uh, ADA requirements, uh, which are, you know, uh, change rather frequently, uh, building code requirements, which also change. Uh, and then, uh, preventive maintenance, uh, at our normal frequency on the HVAC side, uh, which is four times a year, and right now, we're just doing it twice a year. Roof inspections, um, we basically haven't been able to do them, uh, and cleaning from debris, you know, leaves, whatnot, and stuff, cleaning gutters, things like that. Uh, painting, uh, from refreshing touch-ups, uh, that helps, you know, reduce deterioration from the weather and whatnot, uh, things like that. And professional appearances, you know, as people have come and gone, certain offices, uh, need to be, you know, uh, revamped kind of thing. Uh, so a lot of that, uh, kind of thing has been, uh, done, uh, either if with our staff, if depending on, you know, on their, uh, their skill set. But, uh, we've been utilizing contractors to do a lot of these things. And so then you, while it would seem like that, you know, supplements your, your workforce, you also have to, you know, make sure that your contractor's doing things, you know, uh, according to your standards kind of thing, uh, inspecting the contractor's work. So that takes time away from the couple of folks we have. Um, you know, a backlog of things from floor maintenance and carbon cleaning, replacement, uh, exterior cleaning, pressure washing, those kinds of things. Changing out bathroom fixtures, a lot of our bathroom fixtures are old, and we've just been, you know, just leaving them be kind of thing. Um, so, uh, parks facilities, I mean, there's little things that, uh, that we do, you know, whether it's, you know, uh, trim and dry rotting stuff on some of the structures there or whatnot. So there's a lot of little things that it does. The other thing that I would point out that's not on the list here, too, is like when we have something electrical, yeah, you can't just have a single person work on something electrical. So there has to be, both of our folks have to be there together. And so it basically means that nothing else can happen when something like that comes up. So having that third person allows for us to continue to do these types of, uh, you know, proactive preventative maintenance, uh, activities, and, and also just continue on, uh, with whatever the other work is. So, uh, with that, I'll, uh, wrap up and, and take any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Um, a couple of questions. Um, so you, you stated, I jotted it down, so ju- just to clarify for people that don't understand, this is a frozen position, and again, Mr. Heinz, you could clarify for this, some understanding. A frozen position is a, is a position that exists, but it's not budgeted for. So it's not like the money is in the budget, and at the end of the year, we just have that money left over. It is, the position is, is, it exists, we didn't get rid of it, but money is not budgeted that year for that, is that correct?
The frozen position, and we're, we're wrestling with the technical difficulties, but Tina, can you go back to the slide with the frozen positions? Because I need to make sure we have clarity on this.
Yeah, because we're kind of, you know, we're jumping around between new and frozen, just trying to
I can partly answer.
Let me, uh, let me, um,
You want to go to the slide?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, because this is mainly, this is more of a budget issue than it is a pers- a, a position issue. Okay, back in two thousand nineteen, we decided, the city decided to freeze certain positions. In other words, those positions were to be held vacant, um, for the foreseeable future. The value of those positions was deemed to be removed out of the operational budget, meaning out of the departmental budget. So those two officers, that dispatcher, was moved out of the PD's budget. The financial analyst, I'm sorry, the funding was moved out of the PD's budget. The financial analyst, the funding was moved out of finance, building official, maintenance workers, those were moved out of CDD and Public Works. The positions themselves remained on the org charts. So the positions classification stayed in effect. They were just unfunded from a departmental perspective.
Right, so, so that
But the folks, those dollars were not taken out of the budget. They were merely moved to another budget we call non-departmental, which is sort of a general catch-all, uh, budget where we pay insurance and all of those, all of those items that aren't department-specific. So that six hundred and seventy thousand dollars sat in non-departmental, um, through last year's budget, and I'm trying to remove it from this year's budget. And so it was always there. That three point seven million that we returned back to the general fund last year, the, uh, the act for that we returned, it was part of that. And so I'm trying to, uh, do what I can to right-size our budget, and, uh, for those positions that we need, we would like funding and reinstatement for those positions. And that's why on each one of these slides, there's a statement that says the reinstatement cost of the financial analyst, the building official, and the maintenance worker is zero because they're already in the budget, they're just in another part of the budget. And so I am doing my best to shine a light on these positions and how it was done, and trying to take those other dollars for the positions that we don't intend on filling this year, and moving those dollars back to the general fund balance. I either do it now, or we do it in, at the end of the fiscal year. I'd rather do it now. So are we, everybody understand?
Yeah, well, I just want more clarification. So the six hundred and seventy thousand, um, so the frozen positions, we're just shifting money back in to reinstate those positions. The new positions obviously are being created from scratch, and those are being funded by obviously some different things. They're not all, you know, police captain's going to be a little different than, uh, senior accountant, so on and so forth. But to clarify frozen, what that means, bringing those back versus, versus, um, the creation of new, that's mainly the difference.
Perfect, Mayor, perfect.
So then with that being said, you made a comment a minute ago, you said not, which I'm kind of confused, you said you, that we bring back the maintenance worker, that one-third of that is funded by the general fund, which would be the departmental money, I assume, and that the remaining of it is funded by ARPA, but ARPA's not non-departmental, so I'm confused how that comes into play.
Oh, yeah, so that, that position, what I was saying, uh, was before it got frozen, that position was a hundred percent general fund funded. Uh, however, when we froze it, and we, the analysis that we did, and the type of work efforts, it probably should have been funded up to two-thirds approximately by the enterprise funds and not the general fund. Um, so once ARPA sunsets in twenty-six, roughly this position would then shift to being funded roughly one-third general fund and two-thirds the enterprise funds.
Okay, so the financial impact to the general fund being, being, and my, and the second part of this question will be money being shifted from to, non-departmental is sixty-seven thousand nine hundred, that's what we're freeing up from non-departmental and putting it back in, and that represents one-third, or that represents the entire? I'm just trying to get clarification.
That represents what was booked at that time, when we froze these positions. And so if council desires to bring that position back, Matt, Carlos, and I will rework the numbers and work with Mike and find out if that sixty-seven represents a hundred percent of the salary, fifty percent of the salary. But we will make sure that when that, those figures get reinstated, that we will bring them back in accordance to with the, um, uh, out payment, or the allocation plan that Mike desires. So if he's saying two-thirds utilities, then we'll look at that entire position, and then we'll make sure that two-thirds is funded by the enterprise funds, and the other third is funded by the general fund. However, we have the specter of ARPA, and using ARPA for these funds, which I let council know last, late last week. We're still researching that, and so we may have another solution besides the general fund. But I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, I just want to deal with the reinstatement of the frozen positions, the establishment of the new positions, getting through the midterm, and then I can turn my attention to working with Frank, our city attorney, and saying, all right, what can we use ARPA for? And then I'll come back to the council and let you know what's, what's, what's being funded and how. But for right now, assume general fund.
Yeah, so just to dovetail on that, Mayor, um, basically, that is the full, uh, budgeted amount for that position, is my understanding. And so roughly, if you just take ARPA aside and just ignore it entirely, as, as the City Manager was just saying, roughly about twenty-two thousand dollars of that sixty-seven-nine would be out of the general fund, and the remainder would be roughly out of the, uh, enterprise funds.
So
And that's the twenty-seven thousand for that position.
And then the, uh, excuse me, the remaining out of the, uh, enterprise fund.
Correct.
And this, and the, and the, the general fund, twenty-two thousand, that is currently in non-departmental.
Actually, the sixty-seven thousand nine hundred is currently in non-departmental, so the general fund would actually see a savings if the utility took over forty thousand of that.
Okay. My last question, um, this position, bringing it back, do we have, I'm assuming this person needs a vehicle. Do we have a vehicle available for that person?
So we have two vehicles for the facilities maintenance, uh, uh, group. And so, but pretty much two of them are together most of the time, anyway. Right now, since we have two guys kind of trying to cover, um, so we would, we would, my understanding is we would not need a vehicle. No, nothing changed on that front, so.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for the question. Does anybody have any questions for Mike at this point in time? I'm sure he can come back up if we need, but since he's there.
I, I do, just a quick question, since you brought up the vehicle issue. So what you're saying is, just so I have under- my understanding right, that we have three workers that are working on building maintenance, not, and they, the three will have to share two vehicles.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, well, no questions from council at this time, we'll move on to the next.
The clicker, the official clicker is working now. Yes, small victories, yes, we take them when we can get them. So the next position that we're, we're, um, proposing to reinstate is the financial analyst. Again, this position sits in the finance department, the funding sat in non-departmental. And so the cost to reinstate this position would be zero, uh, because those dollars are already in the adopted budget, just not in the finance budget. The financial analyst is a journey level class responsible for performing the full range of financial analysis and reporting duties such as financial research and analysis in support of the city's programs. Um, we are looking to underfill this position with a budget analyst classification, and that's the new classification that we put before you. And it was actually results in the savings of somewhere between seven and ten thousand dollars annually because the budget analyst is paid less than the financial analyst. Um, one of the things that, um, I've noticed, and also the, uh, consultant noticed, is that we didn't have, uh, proper, how should I say, uh, support on the budget side of the house. And so we are looking to take this position and make that person a budget analyst. That person would report up to Carlos Solario, and it would allow us, and we can cover this more when we go through the, the positions at the top of the, uh, listing. But it allows us to continue to monitor and, and oversee this budget at a very micro level. It allows us to provide more reporting to not only the five members of this council, but also to the public and to all the other third-party agencies that we have to report to. But we need this position to make sure that this momentum that we've started keeps going. And so I'm going to let Matt, if there's anything that I left out. And by the way, Matt used to be the incumbent of this position back in the day.
I, I was the last and only financial analyst we had. Uh, no, it's just, it's, it's an important position. I know one of the things we're moving forward with is more budget reporting and being more transparent, giving you more information to make better decisions. And not having an analyst is very difficult. Uh, the finance department's been great. I know Carlos has put a lot of work in to getting you the information that we have tonight. But it all comes at a cost because there's other tasks that he's not doing now. We're also working on developing our, our two-year budget that we are rolling out. I believe the last meeting we, we brought the schedule for. So all the time that we spend on this kind of hinders that, so it's, it's constantly, uh, a game of, you know, catching up and trying to get everything done.
And, and so, and, and we can talk more about the budget analyst when we get to the top of the slide deck, but I wanted to make sure that you saw the financial analyst position, be able to tie it to the frozen position list, and also tie it to the fact that, okay, that's going to be the new budget analyst position when it comes back. And so, and so what I'm going to do is go up to the top of the slide deck again, and we will take each one of these positions and, and respond to council questions. Does that work for everyone? Okay, great, Matt, thank you. And again, what we're going to do right now is we're going to look at the position classifications. So the police captain, the senior accountant, and the budget analyst. Now, if council fills, feels that, okay, the classification works, and we're also supportive of that position being established, then we're most of the way, then we're all the way home with that position. Um, if there's a, we, you know, we like the classification, but I'm not so sure we want to fund it, then we're, then we only establish the classification, and the funding comes out of the mid-year. So that option is yours. So let's talk about the police captain. Chief Kalinowski is here. Do we answer any and all questions about the police captain's position?
And your flashlight is on, so are you going to interrogate us, or?
Yes.
You want me to turn the lights on?
I think it's the other way around, but I can start if you would like.
Never an interrogation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, the position of police captain, um, is one rank above lieutenant. Currently, we have a chief and two lieutenants, six supervisors, and three corporals who provide different levels of supervision or management within the GALT Police Department. And if fully staffed and everybody hired, we'd have fifty-five people in the building on a program that runs twenty-four seven. So back when, um, for full disclosure, when, um, Lorenzo and I talked about me being the police chief, we talked first about reorganizing the department and what it was going to take for us to be successful long-term. And the topic of, um, the establishment of a police captain was agreed that that would be a path over some time that we would go down. And so we're, here we are tonight. Um, that position of the police captain, obviously, as Lorenzo articulated to you earlier, is going to be my second-in-command and be in charge in my absence. Currently, we do that on a rotating basis with one of the two lieutenants. And so for department staff, it provides better clarity, um, oversight and direction in a paramilitary organization. Um, what I want to highlight is that due to the hiring that we've been doing and that we anticipate doing in the next year, currently have over forty percent of my sworn staff with less than five years, and there'll be nearly sixty percent of my sworn staff, um, a year from now, if the hiring program goes according to plan, with less than five years' experience. And what that means is we can't do things like we've always done at, at GALT PD if we're going to ensure that we're retaining our staff and providing the proper oversight and engagement um, after hours and on the weekends. So the ability to fund that police captain through Fund forty-eight, or excuse me, thirty-eight, which I can talk about in a minute, um, allows me to put somebody in the management rank closer to the line staff on a regular basis, uh, which we had done in our leadership development program. Each of our staff who participated in that, um, took the role of lieutenant and/or sergeant for one period. So those who filled the lieutenant's position actually sat as the watch commander lieutenant in the office that I've already established in the hours that are established for this position if this cl- captain's position goes forward. I think that's important. Um, I, I feel like we would do the city and the organization a disservice if we did not reorganize in a fashion that's contemporary with police service and law enforcement expectations from the public. And so providing that oversight, um, is going to be important for us to be successful long-term, to just put it all on the table. Um, this position is filled in Fund thirty-eight, which is the two thousand and five community facilities district. Currently, it has an officer assigned to that, and I've requested through, or I guess the City Manager's requesting, that that position be upgraded to a police captain. There's sufficient revenue in Fund thirty-eight to absorb the cost of police captain without having to tap into other funds. And it was important for me to find a place for this to land that didn't affect the general fund because I need to work hard to put dollars in my staff's pocket in negotiations. So this helps facilitate that. Fund forty-seven, which is Measure R, I think it becomes complicated if we were to talk about placing a management position in a tax measure, which were boots on the ground. And I would argue, as I often would like to be involved in police work, um, we are boots on the ground, but we are admin, and so I think, uh, there would be more heartburn with this position being funded out of, funded out of Fund forty-seven. And I have other ideas about staffing, uh, increases in Fund forty-seven coming forward in the budget. So I covered a lot of topics, as I often do before you, and wowed you to sleep, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Can you give me, um, thank you, Chief, for all that information. And again, thank you for answering questions prior to tonight on this. Can you just quickly speak about, kind of like the Can you just quickly speak about, kind of like the detail, like the, explain now the way it's structured now, we have the two lieutenants by instituting the captain, and then that frees up, can you explain that to me just briefly for those?
Sure, so currently, with the chief, myself, and then the two lieutenants. And each lieutenant runs a division in the department. One runs operations, which is the patrol division. And the other runs support services, which covers detectives, records, and dispatch, special projects, evidence, and volunteer programs, all budget, all that stuff. Both those positions work either, you know, a Monday through Thursday or Tuesday through Friday, along with myself. And so establishing the captain's position allows me to retain sort of that operational component for management, allowing me to move that available lieutenant down the hall, sort of speak, into the pool of those folks that are on the ground on a regular basis to provide that management oversight. So that lieutenant, both lieutenants will still report directly to the captain who reports to me. But the lieutenant in patrol is directly, again, overseen by that captain who oversees both patrol and support services. Now I'm starting to get myself lost, but hopefully you get the drill. I know at least Kevin and Rich do, so.
So thank you for that. Two, two questions or two comments. First, thank you for, I think it is important, as you've seen expressed by some of us up here tonight, you know, is our concern financially moving forward uncertain times and all that, that we are being creative and you are being creative and, you know, trying to find other ways to fund this besides the general fund. So through the CFD and, and I also appreciate you kind of staying clear of the Measure R, which can be kind of a minefield a little bit. So that's important for those folks who get really worked up about the Measure R and what it's intended for and all that. So, but I wanted to say, and again, I shared this with you today prior, but I just want to say it for the public, is, you know, one thing that's been kind of me, people say, you know, we're all very supportive of the police. And I think that all of us up here have been very supportive of our department thus far. And, and so, but we, we just, we also have to ask, you know, questions about, does this make sense? So, and part of my, you know, diligence was to reach out to the officers. And so if someone, a citizen, comes to me and says, well, wouldn't, couldn't we use that money to put more like officers on the street? Wouldn't that be better, you know, and they don't, because they don't understand the position and how it benefits? So in response to questions like that, you know, we reached, I reached out to some of our officers. And I, and I, I know he was supposed to be here tonight and he didn't. But Officer Little, who's the POA, the Police Officer Association representative, did send in a public comment explaining their support for the, you know, the low, from the bottom up, support for the position, the creation of the position, and how it would change the, the structure of the department for the good and, you know, continue the, I guess, the trajectory of what the department's doing. And so, again, we, we did, for those that may be asking this question out there, we did, or at least I did, I'm sure my constituents did, think about, well, you know, is this the best use of the dollars? And again, I think it's important that we keep continuing to move the department forward. You know, we've made big strides in GALT PD with technology and recruitment tactics, you know, all the things. I mean, overall, very pleased with how the PD's been. So I think, you know, if, if, if we can fund it out of a CFD, which was intended for public safety, part of it, and it doesn't affect our general fund, so that takes a little bit of concern off at least my, my, my mind as far as budget stuff moving forward, then I would support it tonight. So I just wanted to say that, so thank you for your presentation.
Absolutely. There's a couple of things I wanted to mention, and I'll take questions first, actually. I didn't mean to shut down the council member, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, not written, not necessarily question or observation. And you can correct me if I'm off base. And just taking note of some of the things that we've approved and are working on. In just the last year, we've added in-car camera, body-morn camera, and the license plate reader. And we have the unmanned aircraft system coming down the pipe. And those are all things that the public's watching. And if you mess them up, that can bring a lot of trouble. They're very important, but as we've approved those things, we haven't added any manpower to supervise them and to make sure that our admittedly very young staff is operating correctly in there. So I can, you know, definitely see the need to move into, you know, 21st century supervision over that 21st century technology. And I think, you know, I've seen a lot of different, you know, flatten the structure or change it to this and that. And they've all worked with the right personnel. And I think that this looks like a good plan to, to achieve those things.
Chief, is now that just a few things, just the clarification. My colleagues there are already clear, a lot of question I have it. This position is, the way is your report, like it can be more communication with you and the lieutenant, right? So then you get a more chance to look the operation is different way. And the other thing, my, my one other question is how many police officer and dispatcher positions still frozen in your department?
So I currently have two frozen police officer positions and a dispatcher. And when the time comes that I'm caught up on the hiring of the funded positions, I would expect, so, and he's shaking his head, I don't want to speak for the city manager, that we would be coming back to you probably for July 1st budget unfreezing those positions. We just haven't achieved, I currently, including this position we're about to upgrade, I have five sworn openings and two dispatcher openings, so we're getting close. So if we continue to have success over the next couple of months, we'll be to the place where we'll be asking to unfreeze those.
Yeah, but this, you know, the captain position is important. It can be more communication between you lieutenant at all operation. And the other frozen position, because this is the department's most important to work as a safety. So keep in mind, we need to something work on that other frozen position.
Yes, sir.
And since this is important, I will support that position tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, for those that may be watching, let me ask you again about putting boots to their level. As you stated, to clarify, the reason we won't, we're not talking about unfreezing some positions that are frozen while we're talking about unfreezing other things, the reason we're not talking about unfreezing police positions is because we currently have unfrozen positions currently in the department, five and plus dispatchers that are not occupied, that are in the hiring process. So there's no need, right?
Right, it would just be a shell game. I mean, last year, just on the general fund, you turned back almost $700,000 in personnel cost from the PD back to the general fund as we funded positions. And that's even included the frozen positions, because we funded positions we could not get to. So funding those positions prematurely is just moving the money to move it back. And so that's why the ask hasn't come forward, at least from me.
Thanks. Does anybody have any comments for Chief Kalinowski?
I, I do. More, more just comments, I don't have many questions. I appreciate your, your ongoing support of, of the line personnel. And I think that one of the things that I always think of, right, is when you have another layer of management, what does that do to the organization in terms of morale? I've had a lot of conversations the last few days. And, and for full disclosure, Mike Little, the POA president, did send an email to all the council members, and that was part of my deliberation in this. And, but I will say this, I, I am wholeheartedly willing to support this position. I think, I think it's needed. You know, we have, we've always had an issue in, in our city. I think that, to some level, that retention of officers is, is a problem. And, you know, we have agencies that are forming near us that I'm pretty surprised, at least early reports are, that our officers aren't applying for that agency right now, which shocks me. Because I believe that we could do a lot more in terms of retention. I think this position will help with boosting training, you know, above the mandatory minimum training. And, and things like that. And, and certainly for the community, if you haven't been around Chief Kalinowski, you understand that he's a boots-on-the-ground kind of guy, a leader. And we've seen that over the years that you've been here, not just since you've been chief. And so I have no problem thinking that, even though we are gonna have another layer in there to help run the department, that you'll still be at briefings and doing that kind of stuff because that's who you are, so. And, and I think that that's what the culture we're trying to create. And so having, you know, all of that knowledge of, you know, speaking with folks and, and your, your knowledge of, and desire to move forward with this, I'd be willing to support the position and fund it, so thank you for coming tonight. Yeah, thank you. And I'm, I'm committed to my staff, I love my staff. And so this is not an attempt to isolate myself, but yet better align the organization for long-term success, long after I'm gone, so, thank you.
Would it be, just because I feel like we're, you know, we're kind of jumping around a little bit on these three items, would it be okay if I, just to save some time, just frequently ask for public comment on any of these? Is that okay? So if you're watching online, or if you're in the room, you'd like to public comment on this particular, on any of these three items, H1, H2, H3, on the general, on the regular calendar, please raise your hand a zoom star nine if you're calling in, or if you're in the room, fill out a speaker sheet. So do we have any currently?
No public comment.
All right, so I am leaving the public comment period open. I will call back frequently as we go through this, so. Mr. Hens, go ahead and continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next position is the senior accountant. The finance department is composed of Matt Boring, our finance director. Cindy Towel is our accounting manager. And Carlos Solario is our budget and revenue manager. So those two managers report up to Matt. And then under Carlos, there is three, I believe, three individuals that are responsible for utility billing. And under Cindy, I believe there's, I believe, four folks reporting to her that handle the day-to-day transactional accounting that goes through the city. You wouldn't believe the number of journal entries that they book during a fiscal year. It numbers in four figures. So it is, it is a lot of work. And so I'm gonna let Matt talk about the, the senior accountant, and he'll be there to answer any questions that you may have.
As you can see on the slide, it's supported by the auditors and the recent management partners review of the finance department. And I think for as long as I've worked for the city previously, it's always been one of the things that's come up, either talking to the auditors or, I think, around 2013 or 2014, they did a study. And one of the things that was recommended is the lack of professional accounting experience and positions in the department. I'm amazed at the stuff that they're able to get done. Even with all the vacancies they had in the last fiscal year, they were able to get the act for done in a timely fashion. But one of the problems that they have is just, it's always putting out fires in emergency. And talking to LSL previously, one of the items that we do at the end of the year is log all of our capital assets into our accounting system. So throughout the year, we buy vehicles, we finish projects, have their equipment. All the records just kind of get thrown into a folder. And then we process them at the end of the year to make sure that all of our books are done correctly. But one of the recommendations that the accounts or our auditors have always said is like, ideally, you do those throughout the year, just so, you know, you don't miss anything. If you realize there's any paperwork missing, you can track that down. If you have turnover in other departments and you need to talk to someone, it's easier to get that done. So they've, they've done a lot of hard work and put in long hours to get everything done. But we don't have a lot of redundancy, and it's difficult when we have vacancies. And we're constantly getting new GASB pronouncements that require different stuff. I know we're working on right now, GASB 87 is, we have to change how we report leases. And so very rarely does a GASB statement revise a previous one. It's almost always new work for you to do. And it's not just GASB that's changing different requirements and reporting. The state also has stuff. Whenever another city does something bad and gets in trouble, they come up with a new annual report we have to submit. And so far, in my experience, they, they never say, don't worry about that report anymore. They still want everything, so. This, this position would help a lot. It would help do some of the improvements that we're looking to do with our accounting software. We, we currently have underutilization of our accounting software, but we don't have adequate staff to analyze and do the work to get us caught up. We're, we're looking at implementing automated time sheets in the future. So currently, the vast majority of city staff fills out a paper time sheet and it gets routed through the city, and then someone in finance keys that into our system, which is very inefficient. And, and we have many other tasks like that, that this position would help alleviate, and we can kind of get caught up and be proactive and stay ahead of the curve and not always reactionary.
The other thing I would like to add, speaking as your former interim finance director, is that over the past year and a half, or at least the past year, we have embarked on a number of improvement efforts for the finance department. We brought in management partners to do a review of the workload, to make sure that we had the right positions in place and to make sure that the work was actually flowing the right way. They left us with a number of recommendations, one of which was the establishment of this position. The other thing that we're doing is looking at our ERP, which is our, basically, the city's accounting program. And so we've reached out to the developers of that program and established what we, what they call business, business process reviews. And so that developer is going to be sitting down with our staff, actually, it's already begun, to make sure that we're getting the most out of the ERP that we have right now. Because we weren't. And there were a lot of issues over in that department. And so we've spent the last year addressing those issues. And so I wanted to make sure you knew how far finance has come, and it's a good momentum. And so I'm pretty pleased with how far they've come. And we're just looking for more analytical expertise to keep us moving right along. And Matt mentioned GASB, Government Accounting Standards. And in a recent questionnaire, or a number of questions that I received from a council member, there were, I believe, four GASBs mentioned toward the end of that, our response to, to council on those, on those GASBs. As Matt, Matt mentioned, we have to adhere to all four of those, and by the way, the entire body of GASB. Those four represent newer GASBs that are coming into play during '21 and '22. And as he mentioned, they have to be adhered to. Otherwise, we'll be sitting here next year with a finding and a very grumpy council about that finding. And so we're doing everything we can to make sure that our audits, our accounting processes are timely, our audits are clean, the budget information is timely, we are as transparent as we can be. And so when council is making decisions about numbers and budgets and policy, the, the one thing that they can be sure of is that the numbers are clean. And that's what we've been striving to do for the past year.
So I have a, I have a question for you, and then, just to clarify, because it, to be honest with you, in the staff report, it, it's, under this slide, it has the monthly, or the, the pay scale. But then in the budget section under item H3, in each paragraph, when it talks about all the positions, it actually never states the overall impact of the position, like, cost-wise. Does anybody have a number for me? Like, because the other one's salary, so it's easy to do that. But this one, it doesn't, in the staff report, it's missing. I don't have the page in front of me, but I could probably find it.
Oh, so it's the same? Oh, so it's the same pay grade as the Budget Analyst? Okay, and I believe that's at 70...
Are you asking for the wage grade or the total salary and compensation?
The total, what the position's gonna, I mean, because on the, on the, on the paragraph where it talked about the Senior Accountant position, it actually stated the total number of what that position was going to be. But, I'm sorry, on the Budget Analyst, it did. It said a 109, 684, but on the Senior Accountant, it's not in that paragraph.
It's the same cost, Mayor.
So, but, but the Budget Analyst, the new Budget Analyst is, is basically an evolution of the old, the old frozen Finance Analyst. So, I understand that that one's going down in cost, right? As you stated earlier, by 10 grand or something. But the Senior Accountant, so the Senior Accountant is kind of on par with a Budget Analyst? Okay. I just want to understand, because this is a new position, so I just want to understand the dollar amount we're talking about here.
Understood, Mayor. Why don't you give us a minute? We'll come up with that number.
Sure.
If there are any more questions, why don't we proceed to those?
Well, I have a different question while you guys are looking at that. I can run this other one by. So, I appreciate the graph that, that was printed in by, not sure if it was HR or Finance, about the progression of the Finance Department from, I requested, from 2018 to now, you know, the vacancies and how they filled and so on. So, if I'm reading this correctly, the Finance Department currently, aside from frozen positions, vacancies, anything, in the Finance Department, there is 12 positions. Does that sound correct?
A 12.6.
Okay. And then, that's obviously fluctuated. We have some vacancies, and this graph is actually pretty thorough, and we dip down and so on and so forth. So, fast-forwarding to where we are now, the Finance Analyst position will become the Budget, because, become the Budget Analyst position. So, it's basically just a swap. And then, of course, the Senior Accountant will become new. So, what I'm understanding is, at the end of it all, we'll have, if we were to approve this tonight, we would have 13 positions approximately in this, in the Finance Department. Is that...
Yes.
Okay. That was my only other question, other than the one, if you can give me that number.
Yeah.
Counsel, if you, is there any other questions right now, or?
Government Finance and Public Education Finance never cease to amaze me because, in the name of transparency and clarity, they endlessly bog you down, as you said, with new rules and new reports that they require, and then, never remove any of the other ones, and I think achieve the exact opposite of what their stated goal is. So, I appreciate the work that's been done, especially over the last year. I think our Finance clarity, certainly to us, and the situation has improved by light years. So, I know you just got back, but my compliments to everybody that's, that's working on that. And I can certainly understand the manpower that's needed to, to keep current on these things. And as you alluded to, waiting till the end of the year to try and go back and find all your notes to complete the reports, whereas our consultants say that, you know, you should be doing those as you go. I can certainly appreciate that, because I find myself behind that ball periodically. So, yeah, I appreciate it, and I'm certainly inclined to support this new position.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for giving us that report. I believe you are very much mentioning that the Senior Accountant job is necessary in your department to run that operation is very clearly and effectively. And right now, you have a 12.6 position. If we're adding that, it can be 13.6 position?
Yes.
Right? And there is also mentioned something, that, so that position can be a WAB Accounting Manager and below your position?
So, with this new position, the Senior Accountant would report to the Accounting Manager, and then the Accounting Manager reports to the Finance Director.
So, this position can be, where to fall that position? Like, there is a Finance Director, then there's the Accounting Manager. Where is falls at a level-wise?
What do you mean, a level-wise? You mean...
Yeah, but, yeah.
We got, so we've got the Finance Director up here.
Right.
You've got two, two managers, Revenue and Budget, yeah, Budget and Revenue, and then you've got Accounting Manager. This position sits under the Accounting Manager, and that's her Senior Accountant.
All right.
So, that's how...
Thank you for the clarification.
Sure, sure.
And the other thing is, mentioning on their products, you can just be clarified, GAAP, GASP 8994. Can you just maybe brief what that each mean? And they're coming in to just new, something start, or is it doing before?
Counselmember, let me look up the questions that I responded to council with, and we'll get you that information in just a second.
Yeah, and, and those are the, the new ones that we're implementing now. We haven't reported on them previously.
Okay, and which one is new, is gonna start for right now and in the future? It's already in the system?
I don't know off the top of my head. I know one of the main ones we're working on implementing is GASP 87, and that's the lease requirement, and that's due to, we have to include that in the current fiscal year reporting.
Okay, and in GASP 87, what that is mean, what we have to do?
That changes, so, the city used to have two types of leases. We would have operating leases and capital leases. So, for example, we lease a copy machine, and we would categorize that as an operating lease. And so, throughout the year, the, the payments we pay for the lease, we would just record as an operating expense, and, and that would be the end of it. And then, for capital leases, like if we were leasing, say, a new VAT con truck or some real expensive piece of equipment, it would have different financial reporting requirements. And with GASP 87, they're, they're changing the classification. So, now, almost all of our leases would be required to be reported as a financing instrument. So, we have to report, it's not just reporting, here's the total amount we paid for, to lease this piece of equipment for the year. We have to break out, almost as if we were financing it, and report, here's how much we're paying for the principal amount, and here's the estimated interest amount we're paying. And there's, there's different ways you categorize the interest. So, it's not just, I pull up my phone and see what today's current interest rate is. There's different calculations, and depending on the type of equipment and what the typical method of financing is, would impact how you report the interest for that.
And so, Vice Mayor, just, so that's 87. And 87 is a new GASP that we're wrestling with. These GASBs are very specific about the reporting. And so, we have to be spot-on when we're submitting reports to our auditors, because our auditors will come in and double-check that we're actually adhering to the GASP. And if we're not, or if we've made a misstep, it becomes some level of finding. So, we have to get it right the first time. The other GASBs that we're facing right now are GASP 89, which concerns accounting for interest costs incurred before the end of a construction period. And so, we're, we've got staff that are monitoring all construction activity to make sure that that interest is being booked accordingly. We've got GASP 94, which involves public-private partnerships. That's also affecting us. Now, the city rarely, if ever, has, has entered into a public-private partnership, but we have to be ready should the opportunity arise. But there's specific GASP for the reporting of that. Then there's GASP 96, which are reporting for subscription-based information technology arrangements for government and end-users. So, basically, all of our software programs that we're currently, that we're constantly reevaluating and changing. I mean, just in the time that I've been here, Finance has brought on, I believe, two new programs, probably, no, we brought on probably five new software applications just in the time I've been here. So, we've got to be able to track those software, those subscription-based software applications, and be able to report out on those things. Then we've got GASP 97, which is effective last June, involves reporting of employees' pension and benefit costs and defined contributions. And so, that affects all departments, all employees, because it, because they're looking for reporting on 457 plans. And so, all employees have access to those plans. The beautiful thing about all of these GASBs that were asked about a couple of days ago is I recently went through a training in December where I had to study all of them. So, it's near and dear to my heart and still fresh in my head right now. But those are examples of the standards that we have to adhere to. And every year, there's another three or four GASBs that we have to adhere to. Now, that's just on the federal level. We're also dealing with the State Controller, the State Treasurer, and their reporting requirements, which are constantly changing depending on sort of the winds of the legislature. And so, there are a lot of opportunities for misstep, misstatement, and, and so, but our staff has been vigilant in making sure that we, you know, that we adhere to all of that, and that we, we take the, the steps necessary to check every box and cross every T. But it's becoming harder and harder, given the proliferation of regulations that they have to adhere to. Hence, why the consultant recommended we have a Senior Accountant in place to make sure that we stay, stay as current as we can when it comes to reporting. And if I've gone on too much with the GASBs, forgive me. I'm an accountant at heart, and so, you bring up GASBs, and that just gets me going.
No problem. Thank you for very much to explanation. The other thing is, this position is Senior Accountant can be above the Accountant. So, this position can be another filter over the other two Accountants, so when is the report will be very clear? That's the, why we're getting that position?
It's, it definitely acts as another check for the lower-level analyst and techs that we have. I think it's all techs. But it definitely acts as another check to make sure that everything's being done appropriately. We had a finding in our, our last ACFER that dealt with accruals, and accrual had not been made properly. Had we had a Senior Accountant reviewing these things and part of the ACFER team, chances of that happening were pretty minimal.
I want to add, that's another...
Yes, sir.
...challenge, having the small department without all the needed positions is, we don't always get the same level of review that we'd like to. Often, it's, you're in a rush, so I don't have time to prepare it to give someone else a lot of time to review. So, it's kind of a quick oversight as we do stuff. So, luckily, we have, you know, very dedicated and, and good staff that produce good work. But, but having more staff would ensure that we don't have these types of findings in the future.
Thank you. And this is so far.
So, I just want to get clarification on the question. Trying to wrap my head around this.
I have that number for you.
Sure.
Looked it up. So, the total compensation cost for the Senior Accountant, that includes salary and benefits, is $118,907 per year.
So, unlike a frozen position, which is a position that existed, and then it was frozen, so the money had priorly been budgeted, and that's why that money then goes to non-departmental, like you explained. A position like this, since we're creating it, right now, we're talking about creating the position, but it's not funded yet, which is what we'll be talking about next. So, I just want to understand that you can have a position created, and then the next step is funding it versus a frozen position, which the money is still there, we're just not using it. I'm, I'm just looking for...
Oh, you're, you're correct.
Okay.
You're correct.
Okay. So, just to keep a running tally so far, understand it. So, we have a building official, which is, where it'd be unfreezing, which is coming, the money will be shifted back from non-departmental. We have a Budget Analyst position, which will become the former Financial Analyst position, and that's also an unfrozen position, which will be reducing by approximately 10 grand in cost. We have a Maintenance Worker for Public Works, which is also frozen. So, money coming from funds that were already set aside, essentially. And then, we have a Police Captain position, which is being funded from CFD funds. And then, we have, we're talking currently about Senior Accountant position, which would be funded by Fund 01. Am I, am I, am I up, is that correct so far? Up to, we haven't talked about litter bait, but that's...
You are, you are correct.
Okay. All right, that's all I have right now. Do we have any public comment? Just can you keep checking in on that online, or?
No public comment.
Okay. Again, a public comment period is open for those watching at home or on the phone, or in the room. Any further questions for Mr. Boring on the, on the Accountant position? If we can move on then.
I think Counselmember Vandenberg.
Yeah, I'd like to just make a general statement on, on this, you know, I'm not... Well, I've been thinking about this a lot, lot, the last couple of days, and I wrote several things out, erased them, rewrote them, you know. So, this is my general thoughts, and I was hoping to get more clarity as all of you asked questions have been, I'm not really sure that happened at all. So, I'll just read the statement so you understand where I'm at. "In the past years, when the city was in financial trouble, the previous administration found it necessary to pull back on the reins as hard as possible because that was the best thing for the city. If I understand the information provided, we are now discovering that perhaps things are not as dire as once feared. I'm not saying that these positions aren't very important. You know, each one is, can be analyzed separately. However, I am cautious of repeating the mistakes of the past without understanding the subject better. At the same time, the citizens paid a tangible price for the lighting and landscaping maintenance of the entire city. And I believe it is responsible, it is my responsibility to see that those services are returned in full, you know, as from a citizen's point of view, and that's who we're supposed to represent. If they were to look at this and saying, you know, you're going to add a police person, a baitment person, you're going to add a couple of financial people, and you still aren't mowing my lawns, you know? It's, it's a very far argument. I was speaking to a citizen today, and they were on an app, and there was his words, but there was 80 to 100 people complaining about maintenance of the city. And this looks, from the outside in, it looks top-heavy. We'll just put, use that phrase, you know? So, I'm a bit cautious about filling all of these positions. I understand what you're saying about just creating position and not necessarily financing it, but I, I do believe there's some merit in the way the mayor phrased it, is that if we agree to it, that's our commitment, that it's, it's going to be there and will most likely be filled.
So, Counselmember, if I may.
Yeah.
We're, and this is more contextual, we're just starting this budget process. You're gonna see a presentation tonight that Mr. Solario is going to give regarding the midterm and where we stand financially. Director Boring is going to give a presentation on our Long-Range Financial Plan. In that Long-Range Financial Plan, we are clearing expenditures by a million-plus every year. And my theory is that the reason we're clearing expenditures by a million-plus every year is there were a lot of things, a lot of cans, and I'll use the council terminology, a lot of cans that have been kicked down the road. One of those is the landscaping contract. And so, that needs to be addressed. We have a number of things that need to be addressed and things that are waiting for us with the development of the '22-'24 budget. What we're trying to put in place here is the tools and personnel necessary for us to specifically monitor our financial condition, because that's been our problem in the past. And this is just the new guy talking. Our, our financial condition seems to be in some sort of a haze in the past. There's been no specific clarity. There's no reasons why the expenses are higher than revenues. There's no specifics. What I'm looking to put into place here, and what Matt's looking to put into place, is people and resources who can give us specifics. The reports that you have before you, the report that I gave in June, last June, gives you specifics, and you need those in order to do what you do as councilman. you specifics, and you need those in order to do what you do as councilmembers. This level of clarity, I don't think the city's seen this level of clarity as far as their budget and their finances. And what I'm trying to do is continue that effort. Now, when we get to budget for that citizen who is concerned, yeah, the landscaping contract is going to be in front of council. We've also got a number of other issues that are going to be in front of council. But I need to make sure that we don't get tripped up with GASBs, budget documents, financial reporting, because that world keeps getting more and more complicated. And so I need to make sure I've got folks that can get that done. But yeah, I am with them. I get it. The landscaping contract has been a constant theme since I've been your city manager. And Director Solis will attest to that. And so I've got to figure that out. We came up with a solution to bring the landscaping in-house. And maybe one of those solutions is the contract. Maybe another solution is to bolster the in-house team to allow them to mow more frequently. We've got options. But in order for me to sit here and say, here's how much flexibility we have funding, as far as financing and funding, and we can do this and we can do that, I need folks who can drive these numbers. That's all.
I don't disagree with what you're saying. I feel like it's my responsibility to know those numbers a little better--
Right.
--before I agree to some of these positions. I mean, some of these, I'm, they're like the building office official, it's kind of going to pay for itself, so I find that rather easy. Some of the other positions, not so much. And, you know, I understand where you're coming from, but I'm just telling you where I'm at.
Understood.
And, you know, if some of this was, you know, put on a subcommittee or maybe just brought back at a different meeting after, you know, I or the others were more satisfied, depending on how they feel with the positions, you know, I'm fine with that. I'm just, that's the way I feel.
Understood. Understood.
I would like to--
And Mr. Mayor, before, if that citizen wants to chat.
Well, his point was that he was watching something on social media, you know, all politics are local.
I understand.
When the average citizen is home, their politics is their front yard in their park, right? So--
Yeah.
They're complaining about, they fund everything in this, everything we have, they fund it.
Mm-hmm.
And they can't get their lawn mowed. That's how they feel about it. So that's, all politics are local, and I'm just speaking up for them.
But all I'm saying is, for the five of you and for those folks listening at home, if you have these concerns, my door is always open. So you can come see me, and me and Director Solis, we'll be happy to chat with you about how things are and what we're doing to make things better.
And that's one of the things I really like about you.
Okay.
I would like to piggyback on, just since it's being talked about, piggyback on what Councilman Vandenberg said is, and I do appreciate Lorenzo Yaw saying my doors open and staff. But I have to say that the common question I get is, well, I didn't vote for that person, I voted for you, so I'm coming to you with my concerns. And I don't think for a lot of people, that's ever going to change, unfortunately. And I'm fine with that, because that's, you know, my duty. So, but kind of talking about what Mr. Vandenberg said is, there is some optics here, and I think that's why a lot of us are really dissecting this carefully and talking about where the funding's come from, because, you know, you talked about finances being hazy. I don't disagree with that in the past. You know, we had, you know, reports given, and then three months later, it went from bad to disaster, and people packing their desks in the middle of the night and all sorts of things. You know, three of us came into this role, like with a box of hand grenades handed to us, and so you have to, you can't blame us for being a little gun-shy. But what wasn't really, what was never hazy was the situation with some of our departments. Parks and Rec, as Councilman Vandenberg mentioned, and I appreciate you talking about, you know, we're going to be reevaluating those things. But the problem is that I think some of the optics are from the public, is that we're kind of putting the cart before the horse. Now, you can say that, well, these finance positions are important to put these in place so we can figure out what we have and allocate money to fix these other problems, but, you know, a maintenance position in public works and a building official, even though some of those make sense in their funding, these are not those positions that we can, okay, let's see how much money we have. My question would be, if we're bringing back unfrozen maintenance workers, why are we not talking about public, why are we not talking about Parks and Recreation stuff? We have positions in Parks and Recreation that are responsible for things like mowing the grass. And yeah, among those guys are working seven days a week out there. I had a guy come in the day and said, I saw somebody weed-eating on a Sunday. I said, they work seven days a week? And they were like, wow. I said, they have to, to try to keep up. So whether we keep that in-house and bolster that, or we re-contract it back out, there's going to be a cost involved, no matter what, there's a cost involved. And not knowing what that cost is for things that are very important to me makes it more difficult for me to approve things like bolstering other departments that I feel like, not that they're not important, but our whole budget crisis, you know, that was, came to us in 2019, which still exists, is the fact that the Parks and Rec department is, you know, has a deficit of a million dollars. That still exists, no matter how good our presentation here of how we're sitting coming out of COVID, that still exists. And we are talking about solutions to try to solve that, but it's still a problem that exists after three years, three and a half years in office for myself, it's still there. I, back to the mowing stuff, you know, we have positions in Parks and Rec that they can't fill. This budget in here actually speaks of some of those positions where we've taken $162,000 that was unspent because we couldn't fill because of staff turnover and unfilled positions. It's disappointing to me that we talk about putting people in positions that are $132,000, $109,000, $118,000, so on and so forth, regardless of what fund they're coming from, and I get that you have to deal with, it's not apples at apples, but you have positions that we can't even fill because we're paying $1,575. A guy could go work at Dutch Brothers and get paid more than that. We have to start talking, having a real conversation about these positions that are detrimental to the community, like, you know, the low-level positions. These are the meat and potatoes of some of our departments, the people that are keeping the streets looking clean. These are visual things that the citizens see. Keeping, you know, our recreation programs, we no longer have. Softball programs, we no longer have because we had to give them to other organizations to run. We did all those things in 2019, massive decisions that three of us here were not happy to make. And the optics from the public right now are that, hey, good news that we came through COVID pretty well, and maybe the financial situation, what is this as bad as we thought? So that's great. But it seems a little irresponsible in some respects with inflation at 8%, gas at $6-plus in some stations. We don't know what the future holds, and I struggle with feeling responsible about taking taxpayer dollars and putting it in some things, which to me and to a lot of the public, they see different priorities. So again, just, this is, piggybacking on what Mr. Vandenberg said, I feel the same way. And so that's why I'm looking at each one of these and trying to really dive into them and understand, because it has to make sense. And I have to look Joe Schmo's citizen in the eye when he comes to me tomorrow and say, seriously, our grass isn't getting mowed? Why? Okay, well, we can't fill positions. Okay, but you hired this position and this position and this position. Now, public safety is, you know, just as an example, makes a lot of sense, because, you know, that's a quality-of-life issue. And even the building official, and there's some other ones in here that are funded from different funds that are not. But we need to be addressing a elephant that's, you talked about cans. Parks and Rec deficit is the biggest can there is in the city, and we're, I think you get the point. I don't need to keep going on about it, but I appreciate--
Okay. You know, I think you guys are right. That's what people see. Nobody is ever, and hazy was a nice term. Our budget and finance was a train wreck. It was a disaster. And some of you guys had to deal with making some cuts to clean that up. Nobody's ever going to get on social media and complain that we're getting bad marks on our GASB, and that our, you know, our finances are a wreck. It's the backbone that allows us to do the things that people see. And that is the next step. And you're right, there's no bigger priority than fixing what people see. And, you know, I am optimistic with just a little more patience that our 2224 budget is going to address that, and it's going to be able to do it because we've cleaned up the disaster in the last year, year and a half that's going to put us in that position. So, no, I totally hear it. I totally see it. And I think that, you know, this group has got a track record of cleaning things up and getting us going in the right direction. It's going to allow us to take care of that. So that's my thoughts on that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, may I have? I would like to, you know, I did hear what the mayor said and what Mr. Papina. All position is very important, and I see that, and I see the director report. But at the end of the day, we have, as a councilor, myself, I'm going to prioritize. Because this, all this money can come from the taxpayers, and they're watching what we make, and make a decision tonight. So I like tonight, look at that position, I like to watch of judge if we can prioritize if something we really like now, if something we can postpone, maybe bring it back to six months or more research. And I'm talking about the financing department. I agree with Mr. Papina, but finance department last report was very good, even we don't have very short staff. I understand Mr. Hines' concern, and that's top my priority, but the other way, we have a lot of position frozen, we're going to unfreeze. And there is some new position we're going to add. So we have to some kind of prioritize what we really need to make a decision tonight and what we can bring back, maybe six months, or if we can. And there is two position I'm highly speaking. One is building official. That's why I mentioned last time. And therefore, he have no building official. And he certainly needs somebody from official. I know when the contract out, sometimes they don't show up. The inspecting, the developer waiting for them to, if there is a person working in the office, he can say, okay, just your inspection time, you go over there. A lot of developer, they're not happy because the inspector, contractor inspector, and we all know the contract, they have a lot more excuse to make their appointment. And the captain position, I think everybody understands that's safety concern, at top of my priority, and I believe every board is priority. So I'm talking, whatever you guys make a decision, I with you guys, but keep in mind, you know, that I mentioned, we still, it's like, everything is not stable yet. It looked like our general fund is very good, but if everything stay is the way right now, there is thing like I mentioned, inflation, interest rate can go up. When the interest rate can go up, it can be effect on the developer. If the interest rate go too high to control the inflation, and I'm certainly, there can be effect in the growth, there can be effect in the growth. Same thing concern of economy. So I hope we can turn, we are out of the COVID, but not is fully recovered yet. So that's kind of my concern. So I let every, you know, my, all the council members think what we need to make a decision. I certainly agree with the staff. They ask what they need, but how we can provide, what kind of leverage, which department we can prioritize if we can.
Mr. Mayor--
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Mr. Mayor, there's still one position left.
Yes, sir.
We've, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Councilmember Lozano was about to say--
Sorry. Sorry, sir.
So are we on, we're, you know--
I think we just concluded with--
So here's my comments. I also believe that we need to address our lighting and landscape issues. I think that's bigger than one position. I think it's bigger than a, and to some degree, in 2018, we did. We brought it in-house and are doing a better job, in my opinion. Still not good. I mean, still not where we need it to be, but we've addressed it. And I happened to be on the council when we went out to hire a city manager. And one of our bigger concerns for the five councilmembers was finance, that along with a couple of other things. So, so immediately, I'm sorry, not 2018, 2020, we addressed the park or the landscape medians and such. So that was within a few months of him getting here. He immediately began to investigate finance. We hired him because he had a financial background. He's coming to us now, saying, here's my evaluation. I've brought somebody else in to take a look, not just my own evaluation, and this is what we need. My experience with him over the last two years, and I've known about these positions for a few months in my conversations with him, the city manager, but in my time, he's never come to us and said, hey, I need this, and not needed it. We heard that tonight with the chief, I mean, you know, almost all of these positions. Here's what I would suggest to at least think about. Am I real happy about putting some of the positions that make over $100,000 in before addressing the full address, fully addressing the lighting and landscape issue? No. But I recognize that in our comments and our conversations, that it is much bigger than a position. And I think we, I think this tonight helps us get there with that. Now, again, I have no problem facing a citizen and saying, I agree, we need to do something about the lighting and landscape. We are getting there. Our finances were a wreck. Somebody said earlier that hazy was a nice term. Even before I was on the council, there was some question, right? And so here's what I would ask my colleagues. Consider following through with what we have asked staff to do. And consider that this is a step in the direction of getting our finances on board. We have all, I've talked to every single one of you about how councils before us have kicked the can down the road. Let's not continue that. Let's get this squared away. Let's support the staff members and so that they can get the job done, because when a citizen calls to ask about their bill, I don't want to have them put on hold because we don't have enough staff in there driving that finance function. Or, and I may have misstated that, but you understand my point is, we are a service organization. So that's kind of where I'm at. Again, I'm not, in my previous study of all the positions, I'm not 100% on board with every single one of them. But I just want to throw that out there, because that is the reality of what we've asked our staff to do is to address these things. This is the result, and we need to take a more serious look at what they have done. And I'm not talking about just the city manager, but that's who we supervise. I'm talking about all the staff. And I'll give you an example. Mike Selling got up tonight, Director Selling, and made a great argument. I can't believe we have, honestly, I can't believe we have three maintenance workers sharing two trucks. I mean, I personally think that they should each have their own trucks and their own tools so that they can do the job, when there isn't an electrical job to do. So anyhow, that's just kind of my thought. But I'm with you, Councilman Vandenberg, on the perception of the public and getting our lawns mowed. It sucks, but we will get there. So that's all I have. I appreciate the work that's been done, and I appreciate the staff's time that you've taken with me personally over the last several months, quite honestly. over the last several months, quite honestly, but several weeks on this particular topic. Thank you.
All right, so we've talked about the senior accountant, talked about the budget analyst in prior conversations. If there's any questions regarding the budget analyst, if there are no questions, I'll move on to the litter abatement worker. Okay. All right, as mentioned earlier, we were directed by council to come up with a job description. A council earmarked forty thousand dollars for the possible funding of these this position, and they've earmarked ARPA as the funding source. The job description is attached to your agenda. And the proposed salary is listed below. It is benchmarked at a parks worker two. The Public Works Department is the home department for this position. It is part-time and at-will. And we'll be working twenty to thirty-six hours per year. And, I'm sorry, per week, yes, yes, thank you, thank you. Slow crawl. Total compensation will be thirty-six thousand per year. And because of our shortage with our fleet, and that's also one of the issues that I'll be dealing with in year, during year two of my time with you, dealing with our fleet and replacement funds for the fleet. This position will need to, Public Works will need to buy a new vehicle so they can add it to their rotation to make sure this position has a vehicle. We also have employee safety PPE that we need to get this person because they will be cleaning up some fairly hazardous areas. And so these dollars are baked into the mid-year. And so I leave it to the council to deliberate the position.
So a couple of things on this, I mean, it's no secret that this is, this position is near dear to my heart. It's something, you know, I'd try to fight for, and I appreciate, as I've stated before, my fellow council members approving this position last month and moving, you know, moving the ball forward. But I'm not going to lie, I was very disappointed when I saw the staff report because, I mean, as we kind of touched on earlier about the problem with recruiting positions that pay this, it makes no good to create a position that's going to sit on empty. And make no mistake, this position is going to be empty. And we're not going to get somebody who's going to come and walk ten miles a day. This is all per the job description. Ten miles a day, have a knowledge of city municipal codes in some respects. Lifting fifty to sixty pounds garbage. It's just not going to happen. And so it's almost futile just to even discuss at this wage. Originally, when Mr. Solis and I sat down way back, and again, we were just spitballing, you know, last year about this. And when the council started talking about this, he was gracious enough to sit down and come up with some maps of what, you know, and he came and said, staff wants to know, what do you, what does this look like? What is, you know, what do you envision? I mean, there was a discussion of wage. It's no secret that some of us here on the council are discussing, we need to make some real hard discussions about these low-level positions. Again, this is another representation of, in my opinion, a position that's going to make a great impact in the community. Like the people that mow the grass and the other rec workers that we can't fill. But it's going to go unfilled because we're classifying it as a janitor. And this is not a janitor type position. I mean, I know you can say the experts, we looked at it and we classified it whatever, but this is, this is just, I mean, we're talking about spending thirty-five thousand dollars on a truck for this person, and we're going to pay him fifteen seventy-five an hour. No one's going to walk ten miles picking up trash when they can go to McDonald's and get a free meal at lunchtime and sit around and post TikToks and stuff on their, on their breaks. I mean, I just, I wanted, I envisioned a position that's going to make a difference in this community. And the way it's presented tonight, I don't think it's going to, for the simple reason that it's just not appropriately being funded. Now, I am very willing to look at whatever, and now this is, just to be clear, this is ARPA money, this is not general fund money. If we were talking about general fund money for this mission right now, I'd be willing to forego the position completely, based on the discussion that we're having tonight on, you know, public optics and everything. But, but I believe pound, you know, dollar for bang for buck on this, what we're paying, what we've earmarked for this will make an impact. I just don't like the divvying up of the money. I just have a hard time establishing we have to spend that much on a truck. I know Parks and Rec, you know, they're using like all kinds of hand-me-down vehicles over there. One of them, I think they paid like nine or ten grand for, they use for parks. I just, I understand maintenance costs, I get all that. I understand, you know, older vehicles, more maintenance, I get that. And I understand that, you know, used cars are up forty percent right now. I get all that, very, very aware of that. But it just seems silly. I mean, what we're going to do is buying a truck and it's going to sit there. Because we're not going to have anybody to fill that position. And if we do fill a position, we're sure in the heck not going to get somebody that cares about what they're doing. The original idea for who would fill this position was going to be maybe a retiree, someone who's looking for some supplemental income. And with the amount of walking it's going to take and some of the job description and lifting, you're going to pretty much just remove a chance of a lot of those people out of it. So this is my initial thoughts on this. I really want to see the position, I want to see it filled, I want to see it in operation, I want to see it start to make a difference in the community. But the way it's presented tonight, I skeptical would be an understatement. So that's my thoughts on it right now, Mr. Heinz.
So, Mr. Mayor, where would you class this position if not at a parks worker two?
Well, I know our landscaping guys, I could be off, but I believe they're at around a twenty dollar. I originally envisioned this position to be like at eighteen to twenty, somewhere in that range. That was a number that we felt we could get somebody to actually want to do it and fill it. Look, it's no secret, inflation is crazy right now, minimum wage, people aren't even paying minimum wage anymore. Minimum wage jobs are paying above minimum wage just to get people to work. I got friends coming, the business owners that are saying, they got people showing up to interviews. And they'll call twenty people and two will show up to an interview, and one of those won't even show up the first day of work, and the other guy works three days and then just doesn't come back from his break. I mean, this is a reality right now.
Understood, we're going through that too.
Yeah, exactly. So this is a chance, we're creating something from scratch. I feel like we shouldn't make the mistake that we're already trying to deal with on other positions. This is a unique position, it's not like anything else in Public Works. I think that if we're going to, if we really want to fill the position and not just, you know, virtue signal that we're doing a good thing, then we need to talk about what's really going to take to fill it.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, and Director Selling and Director Solis, I may need your thoughts on this one. If not at a parks worker two, what position should we flag it to? Bear in mind, we may have some morale issues with the current parks worker staff if this is specked above their classification.
Well, I.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Sorry. No, no, that's fine, I just wanted, this is a good place actually for my thought to segue. I think you're both right. I think the city is stuck in a very unfortunate position that the present economy has outpaced our classifications. There's nothing, the economy's not going to change. Inflation's probably going to continue for a while, even if until they raise interest rates slowly enough to get it under control. But that's part of how I feel about this whole, you know, approving all of these necessarily, is that it's all, it's an ecosystem that we're trying to juggle. And you're probably classifying it correctly in my eyes, even though I don't like the number that I see. And if, what you're fairly saying is if you upgrade the classification, the coworker next to me is going to say, well, you know, this guy got the mayor's suite deal or something stupid like that. It's not stupid, but anyway, it's going to, it's going to create a bad work environment, and we don't want to do that. And I don't want to get into, you know, things outside this topic. But that's really where it's leading, is that we need to correct these things in future problems to help make this, not just this position, but all, all the lower level positions so that you can find people that want to come and work in the city in all those lower-end positions. That's really the solution.
So one of the things that you'll all see, including the public, when I, when I roll out the narrative budget report, is you will see at least ten items that we have to keep in the forefronts of our minds as we develop the budget for the next year. One of those ten, Councilmember Vandenberg, you just hit on squarely. And that, and I think you stated eloquently that the economy has outpaced our classifications. And now that I'm done getting finance straight and some other things straight, now I can kind of turn my attention to the more forward-thinking things that we need to do. And that's first and foremost on our list. We've also got labor contracts that are ending in June. So these things are on my mind right now. And I know those things are out there. And so I don't bring these proposals to you frivolously. I know I'm going to need the help to calculate the numbers because we're going to be putting some proposals in front of you, and we're going to be getting some proposals. And I need to be able to quickly turn those around and be able to show the five of you what the impact is by fund, by person. And those, those proposals are going to morph and change. And we will probably go through fifteen, twenty iterations, and I'm going to need somebody to cost that out every time. And so, but all in the effort of trying to make sure our classifications catch up with the economy. Because Oak Grove and Lodi are our chief competitors, we love them, they're our partners. But they're still our competition in certain respects. So I have to figure out a way to make us more competitive. So that was eloquently stated, sir, thank you.
So you mentioned, and thank you for the comments, Mr. Vandenberg and Mr. Heinz. You mentioned about people being upset, you know, parks worker being upset because of whatever. Well, first of all, this isn't a parks position. So let's just want to state that right up front. If it was a parks position, it would be a little different. But if a parks position who makes fifteen seventy-five an hour, you know, is upset because this Public Works litter abatement position makes eighteen dollars an hour, then maybe he can apply for it. I would like to see, I understand there's compaction and all that, and I get that it has to be a structure. But what I would like to see is, I would like to see, you know, what are the low-level classifications in Public Works? And what are some of those things? This is a unique position, it's not like anything else. I think we're kind of struggling, well, what exactly does it, does it more, was it more like? I mean, to me, it's more like a postal position than it is a janitor. And you know what postal workers make. I just think there's a lot of walking involved in this, and I think that's just my struggle. I, again, I don't want it to be like, hey, we passed this litter abatement back and blah, 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 but after a year, it's still sitting there.
Right. So maybe Director Solis or Director Selling may have some comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just to give you a little perspective of where this position lands, if you were to put it in the Parks and Rec Department in our jobs, we have a parks worker one. Those are about half of the people that work at the flea market. Parks worker two, which is this in line with, that's where the other half live at the market. And most of those guys are supervisors. The next level would be a parks maintenance worker one, and those are the full-time guys that we have at the parks maintenance department that are doing the higher-level work. You know, trimming the trees, doing irrigation and that type of thing. So in the progression, it's parks worker one, parks worker two, and then parks maintenance worker one. The rec worker, you know, market, the twos are the SOAR supervisors, which are in line with this position, SOAR supervisor, lifeguards. That's where this position is in line with, if you were to put it in parks. But obviously, it's not in parks, but it's aligned with that in the salary survey. I don't know what Public Works' next position is above this. But I'll let Mike.
Mr. Solis, may I have a just question? You know, this position, you have a lot of experience to hire, you know, low-level worker, right? And this kind of salary, what's your opinion, how soon you can fill up that position? If, for example, you don't fill up that position next thirty day, what you think you can do?
I can tell you some of the things like Mayor Farmer said. I had a, our full-time supervisor on the landscape crew lasted, the first one lasted less than a year before he was promoted. The second one lasted a week and decided not to come back. Offered the job to a third person, didn't pay enough money. Offered the job to the fourth person, his tire shop offered him more money to stay, so he declined the job. And right now, we have zero qualified applicants to really interview. And that's for a full-time position. So to tell you the truth, I don't know what to expect on this. That's my experience at the Parks Department. They're hard to fill. We'll be bringing in the midterm to bump up our twenty-hour-a-week employees to thirty-six. Trying to entice people because they're limited to twenty, they don't want the job. Entice them with more hours, hopefully for them to take it. But it would be, a lot of them would be at that position that you're offering, that fifteen seventy-five an hour to start.
Is it possible that this position could be split between, so just, just so you understand why I'm thinking. You have a present forty-hour-a-week position. And you just reschedule that person to do this job for twenty hours a week and his standard job for twenty hours a week. Not that you'd want to take away from what you already have, I'm just saying that this might be a way to hire, hire an individual and fill two gaps at the same time.
After going through, speaking to Mayor Farmer, the areas he wanted to cover, you're going to have to work thirty-four to thirty-six hours a week. So there is no way to split a position.
I thought we just said it was just part-time, but that's.
That is part-time. We have temporary, which is under twenty. Part-time, which is twenty to thirty-six, and full-time is forty.
Okay.
So there is no opportunity to split a position on that.
I'm going to kind of defer to Director Van Steine to maybe help me, because I don't know the hourly rates for some of ours. But I would say really what you're looking at from the Public Works Department as far as, you know, the next level comparable potentially would be, like we talked about earlier, the facilities maintenance worker one, or probably the streets maintenance worker one. I think that they're probably in the eighteen to twenty, twenty-one dollar range.
Yeah, so the facilities maintenance worker one starts at eighteen fifty-seven an hour and then goes up to twenty-two fifty-nine an hour.
And so when you look at what, you know, what types of skill sets that those types of, you know, positions entail, it's, you know, on the facilities maintenance worker side, it's plumbing, electrical, carpentry, other mechanical things, you know, working on the doors and whatnot, things like that, lighting. But, and then on the, on the streets maintenance worker, you know, these are the folks who are out there, you know, digging trenches when there's a water leak or repairing street light connections, things like that. So, you know, there's, they're much more of kind of a labor level type position and kind of a broad skill set. So, you know, when you look at those folks who are making in that, you know, probably within, you know, I don't know, a dollar or two an hour of what, what the mayor's mentioning, and I totally agree, I think you're, you're going to struggle to find somebody to fill this position at that rate. But the thing is, is, you know, it's, it's all kind of interconnected, right? And so whether it's folks in parks or whether it's folks in Public Works, and whether it's a perception or whether it's a reality as to what somebody's making and what their level of effort and or, you know, skills required to do that job is while walking around, you know, several miles a day. Doesn't take a lot of skill, obviously, but it is pretty strenuous potentially too. So, and you're out there on roads, you know, you've got to be alert, there's traffic. And I think we've, and seen there's been some concerns along those fronts too. So, you know, I mean, it's, it's really hard to compare. I mean, you know, it's, it's a tough, you know, you can't really say, well, if, if you take this or away or whatever, that this is kind of more apples to apples. It's different enough that it's, you know, it's a challenge. And I think, you know, probably to Director Van Steine's, you know, challenge to, okay, how do you classify this position based on those skills, based on those requirements that are needed? It is a very low-level skill set. And, and then again, because it is all interconnected, you know, you're going to get employees potentially from within my department, Director Solis' department, or who knows, that are going to, again, perceptively or, you know, reality say like, well, you know, that's, you know, not fair kind of thing or something. So, and to the mayor's point, yeah, they can apply and, and then it just kind of starts a bit of a domino effect too, so.
Mike, what's your turnover on positions that you mentioned in the, the streets maintenance? And are those full-time positions, are they twenty, thirty-six hour, are they more?
Yes, no, they're full-time, yeah. And we've had some turnover. We've definitely been, you know, and Ms. Van Steine can probably tell you more better than I can. But I know we've been doing interviews probably, oh gosh, off and on for the last year, year and a half or so. So there has been some turnover, yes.
So the differences too, though, we're talking about, you know, they may make, I mean, you have positions that they're full-time, so I mean, there's more money involved in the position because there's more hours. Like you said. Like you said, like Mr. Solis mentioned, coming back and asking to take the 20-hour people, bumping them up. So they're not necessarily maybe going to get a bump in pay, but they're going to get a bump in hours, so they're going to make more money that way. But again, this position is kind of fixed because of the, you know, purse concern and all that. I think you mentioned it is very unique. It's a unique position. It's not like anything else. I mean, some of the job description says working in all weather. I mean, it sounds like a street maintenance position, kind of. You're out there, you know, foggy, cold, could be raining. You have to have an understanding of Galt Municipal Code because we want it to, you know, I mean, I've been out in the street cleaning the streets. I mean, I've picked up dead animals that were like deteriorating, I mean, all kinds of foul things that we've picked up. So it's not just a cushy job. It's, you know, riding around in a truck and fixing, you know, a street light or something. It's kind of a grungy job, and a lot of people are going to want to do it.
Yeah, agreed. I think a lot of people don't think along those lines, though. They think, oh, I can put in my earbuds, and I can just walk up and down the roads and get my steps in, you know, and pick up some litter here and there. And so they, you know, misperceive, you know, what really this job might well be, as you just noted, so. And so that's kind of the challenge is, right? You've got to manage the perception as well as the reality. So, and that's where I think the challenge comes.
And it comes just on money standpoint. I know that, I think the top, the discussion is really focused here on compaction with other positions, not about the amount of money being earmarked for this position because clearly we could pay 18 bucks an hour if we just bought, you know, a $20,000 vehicle or a $25,000, even a, even a, even a $28,000 vehicle compared to a $34,000 vehicle would be enough money to pay that person over the course of how many hours. So there's some, there's some moving around of funds, but I think this is not so much about the money being put in the right place. It's part of that for me, but this is really about your guys' concerns about other people in the department saying, well, that's not fair that he makes blah, 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 whatever. But again, I just, you know what? I mean, we could sit here and go, okay, fine, let's just approve it at the position. And when we come six months from now, it's not going to be filled, I'm going to be sitting up there saying, I told you so, and I'm going to expect some kind of change at that point. Because if I'm going to agree to it tonight and not fight for it, I'm going to fight even harder the next go-around. I mean, and not just for that position, but other positions we can't fill. This again is, going back to what Mr. Vandenberg said, the optics are that we can't even fill these positions that do great service to the community, that rec workers and things, these are low-level jobs, but they're important jobs that the citizens see. They see people working at the complex. They see people working at the market. They see those people. And here we are approving, you know, triple-figure salaries for people that, because those are, jobs are important, and I'm not saying they're not important, but these are not just finance positions we're talking about. We're talking about maintenance workers for your department. So how is it fair to bring on, unfreeze a maintenance position because you say it's so important when I haven't, I don't see anything, you're asking for anything from Mr. Solis' department? I'm just saying. So.
That's coming.
Well, and maybe just to address the vehicle to maybe give the council hopefully some, you know, I don't know, a better feeling of it. The vehicle would unlikely be assigned to this person immediately to purchase a new vehicle. I mean, you know, at this level of position, we would probably assign the vehicle elsewhere within, you know, the city's fleet and utilize, you know, a different vehicle, an older vehicle or what-have-you truck for this position. Again, it's part-time, so we would definitely maximize, you know, the vehicle usage, so I just wanted to point that out, so.
Kick this conversation on litter abatement, and my constituents probably want to say some things, but my thought is, feeling right now is, I would like to maybe, you know, I don't know if we can approve, I mean, if we're classifying it, then it's going to lock these numbers in. I would rather see that this position get bumped back to a further meeting and have Ms. Van Steine and maybe Mr. Selling or his staff come back and maybe try to figure out where we could fit this in a little bit higher, where it's not going to become a problem with other positions. You know, maybe even, I would be even willing to compromise, but I think, you know, even a dollar's going to make a difference, and we're not getting too, so that's what I would suggest as a compromise before we approve the classification of it.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Sure, go ahead.
Comment here. So, so I did have a lot of questions. In fact, I called the mayor today to have a discussion because this was a vision that he had about this, and so I wanted some clarification, and had a great conversation. I think the conversation that we've already had tonight around the litter abatement worker is, hey, listen, if we feel, if we felt like it could be filled, it was the right salary for somebody to be, you know, somebody to apply for it, we all want somebody out there helping pick up trash. That's why we're here talking about it. If that wasn't the case, we wouldn't have been here, right? We would have said, I don't think that's important. It is important. But I think what our discussion has discovered or uncovered, at least in my mind, and I've been thinking about this a lot, to Councilman Vandenberg's point, our folks are probably well-underpaid. And I don't think it's compaction. I mean, I think it is, but in a different sense, that if we were to bring entry-level people up to a salary or salary step that we could recruit into and retain, then we would have to do that, obviously, all the way up. But I think that many of our entry-level positions that we're looking at here, even parks worker two, you know, we, in our conversation today, we talked about where you could work for much more money and much less commitment to the actual job. And I do have a hesitation with making a commitment to a position that we have all said, include, some of us up here and staff has said, we're never going to be able to fill that. I would propose, and to go to the mayor's point that he just made, was I would propose, this is our, this is our position that we wanted. I would propose that somebody from our council communicate with staff that can make those adjustments and make those adjustments where we can, and then bring it back to staff, I mean, to the council. That would be my proposal. And I think it's right along the lines of, you know, doing it sooner than later. But like I said, I, it bothers me to a certain extent that we are having problems filling positions that are paid more than this, and we can't, and we're just, didn't I, I told them today, this thing, this job will never get filled. Or if it does, it won't be for any tenure. And so that would be my choice. And then I would ask if my initial, some of my initial questions were, does this person really need a $30,000 vehicle, or does Public Works need it? And if Public Works need it, let's have that separate discussion. And then lastly, one of the things we discussed was the fact that there has to be some kind of metrics in place to say, this person, this, this, this position is valuable. Now, I will hear from the community, you know, that my street looks better, or not my street, but the streets and the quarters look a lot better. But is there a way, and I don't know, I haven't done this before, but is there a way to say, you know, if they do these things, we would, we'll look at that and go, well, that's successful? And I'm not talking about, you know, employee evaluations and performance evaluations. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about, come back to us in six months after we have this in place and say, you know, they've, they've, they've collected 10 bags of trash per day for whatever. And I know I'm kind of probably oversimplifying that, but you get my point, is how are we going to figure out at the end of the day that we want to retain the position or that we need more? Because there may come a time where we're going, man, Calways can't keep up with this. Let's, let's, let's add somebody. So those are my, just my thoughts, and I would, I would offer my colleagues the opportunity to chime in. Thanks.
I think you're right that discussing this, we've highlighted something that we're going to be dealing with in the budget, top to bottom, is we've got positions we can't fill, and we've got positions we can't retain. And, you know, I'm fine with, you know, like the mayor said, holding this off to kind of reconsider and see what we can do with it, but it's going to be part of the bigger conversation to be able to fill the positions that we can't right now. And as we talked about with the police department, being able to retain and not continue being a training ground for agencies that can pay a little bit more.
I would like to just mention that, are you done? I'm sorry.
Yeah, you know.
Okay. You know, this position, along with other positions that have gone, and again, this is a segue into a different, obviously, different conversation, but I think we're realizing here, and I just want to, I want to just clarify so people understand my feeling on this. This position, along with other parks positions, are quality-of-life positions. Quality-of-life, as this council has expressed, is very important. Obviously, when you say that word, you think of, you know, when people move to this town, they want a safe community. They want a safe community, they want great schools, and they want the community to look clean and be well-kept. Those are the three quality-of-life issues that I've heard in my entire life in this city and what people, you know, want to see from Galt, including in my tenure as an elected official. And so these low-level positions, although they're not out there fighting crime and carrying, you know, firearms, they're equally important in their own way. And they provide a service to this community because I can tell you, we could have the biggest police force there is and have zero crime, but if the streets are nasty and dirty and the weeds are five feet tall, people are going to be upset. And we know that's true because we've seen it in this community, talked about for years now. And so, even though it's different, it's still a quality-of-life issue, and that's why this position was so important to me. And I think we don't, can undermine it as just being along, just picking up, you know, cups and things on the side of the road, because you can't look at it that way. So I just wanted to make sure, understand what my vision is for what this position is and other positions that we're struggling to fill like we've all been talking about.
Okay, so how do you want to proceed, Mayor?
I think we've got presentations from everyone on all the positions. Is there any public comment, Tina?
No public comment.
Okay. So the public comment period is open on these three agenda items.
Actually, we still have presentations to provide for H3 and H4.
Okay. So because they're all intertwined, you want to just proceed on with those?
So we can, we can move to voting on H1 and H2 if you're ready to take action on those two items.
Okay. I think we probably could do something like that. Why don't we just wait a few moments here for Mr. Lizano to return?
Yes.
And then we can.
Very good, sir.
I do want to thank all the staff for your presentations tonight, though. I mean, you know, I understand all your departments are very important to you, and they're important, they're important to the city. It's like, it's like picking your favorite child, you know? So I don't want anybody's, I didn't want any of my statements, or I think I speak for the rest of us, we don't want any of our statements coming off like, we don't think that your department is any less important than another department. But it's just that, you know, we have certain priorities in our minds, and we're trying to come up with compromises and things. Again, for the public, if you are watching this meeting, you can make public comment on any of these items by raising your hand on Zoom, or you can press star nine on the phone, and we will call upon you to speak.
Go ahead, Jim.
Before we vote, I have a question for legal counsel about what we can do on each position, so if we could just hold on until he comes back as well, please. Can we parse these out?
Yes.
Perhaps just by single position?
Yes.
Because everybody feel, I feel differently about different positions. I don't know how everyone else feels, but I don't know, you know, if there's any, like, legal requirement for how we vote on them, but personally, I would prefer to vote on each position one by one.
Okay, that's fine.
That's fine. You can just, if they have to tweak the resolutions to reflect the council's will, that's easy to do.
And I just wanted to say real quick before we do that, I agree, I like that idea. If that's what everybody agrees with, we can go one by one. Just kind of summarizing all this stuff we've talked about, obviously, all these positions are different. They're being unfrozen, new, they're all being funded by different things. So they're all actually not, there's not a lot of apples-and-apples comparisons here. I personally, even though I said the optics earlier of what I feel, I do think that some of these unfrozen, even though the money is there, it does, it's okay. It's one thing to unfreeze a position and do it compared to creating a new one. So for me, I only struggle with positions that are going to be impacting our general fund at this moment in time. Again, I think if we evaluate things in six months, I would, I just am really concerned about the, you know, what things look like for the next six months with the uncertainties in the world. So again, just wanted to let, put that last input there in before we make any votes. So how should we proceed with this?
So, Mr. Mayor, let me offer a compromise, since only one of these positions is utilizing new general fund. If I and the city attorney figure out a way for ARPA to fund that position, would you be more amenable to it? I'd like to hear from, yeah.
Personally, I mean, I like what you're saying, but long-term, I don't because it's, ARPA's nice, but it's, it's just, you know, it's temporary. So I feel like all these positions are long-term decisions, and I think of them as 10, 20 years. You know, I'd hate to hire anybody and tell you like, well, ARPA's gonzo, so are you.
Understood. I just wanted to make sure that option was out there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, someone asked you, why didn't you consider that? Okay.
I think to Jay's comment, we would probably get someone saying, well, that's great, because it does sound good, and it's an easy way for us to say, hey, let's do it that way. But then you'd have somebody saying, well, why don't we use an ARPA money to beef up the landscape guys? You know, I mean, so you can, you're kind of going down a rabbit hole with that a little bit. It can be a little bit.
That's coming too.
I was just going to say that. I suspect that's coming.
Yeah, we're just starting, gentlemen. The next three months are going to be just like this.
Well, and I just want to remind my colleagues that, you know, we went through this ARPA presentation some months ago, and we have ARPA money that staff hasn't been able to get to, to bring to us, like, small business help, nonprofit help, you know, money that's going to go to our, one of our partner agencies, that in my estimation, at least, a couple of those are kind of no-brainers. So, you know, we have till '26 to do it, but, you know, nonprofits needed it yesterday, some of them, and some, and some small businesses needed it yesterday. So, you know, we've, we talked to the city manager about what priorities are, and he and I talked about those three specific ones the other two weeks ago. And we need to start moving on that because there are other jurisdictions that are, have rolled it all out already. And so, not that we want to be just like every other jurisdiction, but I think it's unfair to hold on to money that could really be used in the community for good stuff, so. Just my comments on that. I wanted to get that on public record, that I think we need to allow staff the time to roll those out and get those going.
To that point, I'm certainly fine with voting on these things one at a time, but I think it's a pretty well-laid-out plan to put our finance department in a position to get that out as fast as possible, get the ARPA money out as fast as possible while dealing with the end of labor contracts and our new budget cycle all at once. So. So, you know, I understand all the points made, but like I said before, I think the backbone of being able to do all these things we want to do is what we have in front of us.
So, City Attorney Splendario, should I just call out the position and, or city clerk calls out the position and we just do a roll call?
I think we should probably do on each position, and just to be clear, it's approving the classification, the job description, and the salary range. That's not appropriating it, it's just the salary table. The appropriation will be in the, so you're not funding it effectively. You're disagreeing that if it's funded, this would be the salary schedule. So when the city clerk calls out the position, that's what the approval would be for, correct, Stephanie?
So when Tina asks for the position, then I would be asking for a motion to, I mean, doesn't she need to read briefly what we're, I mean?
Yeah, so she could, the, there were two resolutions. One of them was standalone for the litter-baitment worker, so she could take that resolution and just, you know, read the staff report. But the other resolution had three positions, the police captain, senior accountant, and the budget analyst. So she's just going to read that section of the resolution that relates to each of that position. And then if council were to approve one of those three and not the other two, for example, then staff will just revise the resolution based upon what council's direction was.
But what if we wanted to make an ulterior motion for something quite different? Instead of just a yes or no, we say, well, I would support that, but in this way. I mean, there has to be other options.
Yeah, so if you, if there's an alternative, alternative motion or an amendment to, if there's any kind of motion or any kind of amendment, whatever is reflected of the will of body will be reduced to a resolution. So the resolution's probably going to have to get revised after tonight. I don't get the sense that all four are going to be a slam tuck. So there's going to be some work done after the fact to reflect whatever the council's will is.
Well, I do want to state before we vote that I'm not, I'm, we're trying to be open-minded on this, and I don't. I'm going to make it clear that I'm probably not going to support tonight the senior accounting position because that is an O1 position. I will be supportive of some of the others that are coming from different fundings that are unfreezing, but I also want to say that I'm more than happy to revisit that in a few months. I just am concerned about upcoming labor negotiations, some other things. So at that point in time, we can kind of see where this whole inflation and gasoline and all this stuff takes us in six months, I would be a lot more willing to discuss some of that. So I'm just going to state that right now. So that it doesn't look like it's a hard no for me, it's more like a see, a wait kind of thing for me.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, you can make a modified motion, right, Mrs. Splendario?
Yeah, well, there's no motion yet on the table, but...
Well, can we read the recommended action from the first one? So we know what is exactly the recommended action is, and then modify it for me.
All right, so the recommended action is to adopt a resolution establishing police captain job classification, senior accountant job classification, and budget analyst job classification, approving the proposed job specifications and establishing salary ranges for these job classifications.
And so can we just read out each classification, Madam Clerk, and get a vote?
So starting with the first job classification for police captain?
Okay, have a roll call, please. Or we need a motion?
We need a motion.
I would like to move this item to approve the position of police captain. Moved by Mayor Farmer, seconded by Councilman Lozano. Have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Yes. Approved five to zero.
So the next job classification is senior accountant.
All right, we're looking for a motion to approve senior accountant position.
Move to approve.
Moved by Councilmember Papino, seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Can I have a roll call, please?
Can I, can I have a, I have a question real quick. So just, just for clarification, I think I understand it. We're approving job classification, salary placement, and job description.
Salary schedule, yes.
Right, right, got it.
Correct.
Yep.
And the other thing I want to clear, we're not approving the job, we're just proving the, what were the motions?
You're approving the position and the description that...
Both?
And the salary schedule for the position. What you're not doing is approving the appropriation of the funding, that would be the next item. That's part of the mid-year budget approval process. So right now, on paper, you're approving that in the org chart and all of the descriptions, you're approving this position that exists in the city, that this is the description for what that job will do. And if that job was funded, this would be the salary schedule. That's what you're, that's what this is, that's what this would be the approval for.
At what level does the city manager, if this were approved, at what level would the city manager have carte blanche to fill the position? Because these three items for this one position have been approved by the council.
I won't have the ability, I'm sorry, I won't have the ability to fill the position unless it's funded. So...
So we have to keep an eye out, if we approve this, we have to keep an eye out whether we fund that line item in the upcoming budget, or we vote against it.
Yeah, you're going to approve the, just the job classification now. In item H3, that's where we're asking for the funding of these positions. So if you want to, so when we get to H3 and said, you know, although we approved these positions earlier, I don't want to, I don't want to fund it in the mid-year. And so it becomes a live position, but it has no funding.
How much time does that save if we approve the first half, but not the second, and decide in six months? Because I'm somewhat familiar with, I mean, in line of thinking with the mayor that I'm a little cautious. So how much time does that save us if we approve the first half, deny the second half, and in six months it comes back, that we feel more comfortable with the budget, and then we approve the second half?
Well, that saves us having to bring back the approval of the classification and then funding. It saves us one step when it comes back, because the position already exists.
Okay.
All we're looking for is the funding.
Okay.
It's a two-step process regardless.
Well, okay.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the senior accounting position.
We think we had a first and second.
Oh, we did, I'm sorry, we did. Yeah, then you asked a question. Okay, so it was moved by Councilmember Papino, seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
No. Position approved four to one. We're now looking for, you want to read the next one, Tina?
Last job classification is budget analyst job classification.
All right, looking for a motion to approve the budget analyst job classification.
So moved?
Moved by Councilmember Papino, and...
Second?
Second. Is that a question?
I was just trying to give somebody an opportunity, but...
Yeah, seconded by Councilman, excuse me, Councilman Lozano. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Yes. Approved five to zero. And now we are moving on to H2,
which is the approval of the litter-baitment worker.
So I would like to make a motion that we table this item and bring it back when HR and/or staff, whoever that may be, can come up with a different classification or see what can be done and bring it back to us as soon as possible. That's what I would suggest.
Second.
And I would be supportive of that if, Mayor Farmer, you worked with them directly so that when it comes back, your expectations are already reflected.
So when it comes back, we don't have to talk about it a bunch?
No, 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 not at all. I just, I just think that, I just think that that would be good so that we, when it comes back, we're on the same page with staff.
And I'm not digging my heels into this, I'm willing to compromise. I just want to see some meeting in the middle or something here, so. Okay, so moved by, so the motion was to bring the item back for a second look at the classification for the litter-baitment worker, moved by Mayor Farmer, seconded by Councilman Vandenberg?
Correct.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Approved five to zero. Moving on to item H3, and this, we need to hear this, right? So we're now on to three.
Yes, we're on to three now.
All right.
And so the next presentation will be given by our Budget and Revenue Manager, Carlos Solario, and, and he will present the mid-year budget projections, which is H3. And then our Finance Director, Matt Boring, will present H4, the Long-Term Financial Plan. And so this is Carlos's first presentation before the Galt City Council, so be kind, okay?
Good evening, Mayor Farmer, members of the council, and everyone here present. As Mr. Heinz stated, I will be going over the year-end projections and budget requests for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget. Thank you. The city budget was adopted by the council in 2020, revised in 2021. And today, we are presenting to you updates based on current information about city operations. And in those estimates are included certain budget requests. I will be going over each one of those requests, fund by fund, revenue and expenditures. Starting with the general fund, we are anticipating a net increase in revenues of $692,000 by the end of the fiscal year. Now, this increase is composed of several factors. Secured property taxes are projected to be close to our budget estimate of 3.3 million. We are only off by $3,500 in our estimate. Sales tax revenues are anticipated to surpass our estimate of $2.9 million by $376,000, for a total of 3.3 million. Transient occupancy tax revenues are anticipated to be off our budget estimate by $74,000. That's 74,000 below original estimates. Other taxes are estimated to surpass our estimate by about $70,000. In addition, we are anticipating to receive $79,000 of grant revenue for planning projects. And we are expecting to receive additional revenues in the amount of $245,000 from engineering charges for services. That is a result of increased development interest in the city. On the expenditure side, the city manager is requesting the following items. Increase in appropriation in the Community Development Department in the amount of $99,000. This is composed of two items, $79,000 that correspond with the $79,000 grant that we just reviewed, and $20,000 related to the salary and benefits for the building official position. These $20,000, it's for the remainder of the fiscal year, assuming that we will hire in the last month of the fiscal year. An increase in appropriation in the Parks Special Events Budget in the amount of $68,000, of which $45,000 correspond to a part-time position previously approved by the city council. The remaining increase is a combination of cost increases for city special events and tree maintenance. An increase in appropriation in the Public Works Department in the amount of $43,000 for the discussed litter-baitment worker position. And budget savings in the amount of $673,000 in the non-departmental contingency budget, as Mr. Heinz described in detail in the earlier part of the presentations. In the Parks and Recreation Fund, we are anticipating revenue losses of approximately $127,000. This is a net loss. While we have experienced some modest increases in revenue in the Galt market revenues, as well as in the other revenue categories which fall within the Parks Administration Department, we're also anticipating significant revenue losses in recreation and the aquatic center. Most of these revenue decreases are a result of the limited capacity and the limitations driven by the pandemic. Expenditures on the other side are expected to experience savings of about $164,000. As Mr. Solis stated earlier, there has been a difficulty filling in part-time positions. So these savings are a result of that. Later in the presentation, I will share with you what the plan is for these savings. On the Meishoar Fund, we are anticipating to receive a significant increase in revenues of $356,000. And that is a result of sales tax increases, as, you know, sales tax increased in the last year, year and a half with the increase in sales, sales tax for online sales, car sales, and so forth. So we are getting a share in the Meishoar Fund. We are also receiving a $35,000, a $35,000 reimbursement in the Meishoar Fund from insurance. But we're also experiencing cost increases. We are requesting an increase in appropriation in the Meishoar Fund in the amount of $222,000. It's a combination of staff turnover, both of which are, half of it is part-time, I mean, overtime. Overtime is the vehicle that's used when a vacancy is filled. So those costs quickly accumulate. So we're having a budget shortage in, that reflects that turnover and the increased use of overtime. In the lighting and landscape districts, we are requesting appropriation in the amount of $75,600 for the Northeast Lighting and Landscape District, $20,000 in the West Side Lighting and Landscape District, and $18,000 in the Landscape Lighting and Landscape District Number Three. The proposal I mentioned earlier about the use of Parks and Recreation savings is that we shift the savings, the equivalent amount of the savings in the transfer from the general fund to the Parks and Recreation Fund to the Northeast and the West Side Lighting and Landscape Districts to fund the increase in appropriation. And the remainder would be the increase in the Special Events Division within the general fund. This table shows the increase and decrease in transfers out. Utility funds are experiencing slight losses in revenues, mostly because during the pandemic, we stopped collecting late fees and fines for water shut-ups and reinstatements. So these are minor losses compared to the overall revenues, but we still wanted you to be aware that there will be a slight loss. We're also requesting the establishment of a budget for the Community Facilities District 2020-1 that the council approved last year, last, in 2020, 2021. And so the establishment is for $53,810, both revenue and expenditures offsetting each other. Any questions on any of the requests or revenue variances?
Don't, don't be insulted, it's all right, it's okay. No questions are a good thing. So there was a request when we did the council briefings last week for a breakout of the revenues. So we could maybe provide an educational moment for the public. revenues, so we could maybe provide an educational moment for the public, so they can see all of the revenues that flow, the big revenues that flow into the general fund. Carlos, I think that's the next, yeah, this slide here. So we want to stay good on the promise that we made during the two-by-twos, and to let everybody know, you know, these are, quote-unquote, "the other taxes," the half-cent sales tax, the property tax, well, you saw the property tax secured, but what's lumped in under other taxes is the half-cent sales tax, the prior-year property tax, secured vehicle and lieu, property tax transfer, and franchise fee, and I believe that's it. But we wanted to make sure that we gave council an opportunity to see all of the, all the revenues in their glory. And I believe that concludes the presentation for the mid-year. The positions that you, where you've approved, the classifications are baked into, sorry, are included into these numbers. And so even with those positions in there, the general fund revenues are projected to be up at 692. Carlos, can you do me a favor? Can you take us back to the, the two general fund slides? Yeah. Okay. So on the, on the expenditure side, the, these positions are baked in, both the new positions and the unfrozen positions are part of this proposal. The thought was to, while we see increases of the departmental appropriations, the non-departmental contingency, banking those savings, or sending those savings back to the general fund balance, offsets those increased expenditures, and our expenditures adjustment, actually, our net expenditure adjustment actually goes down. So, so between that expenditure adjustment and the fact that we've got more revenues, from the mid-year, from the mid-year perspective, we feel confident that the city is staying within budgeted parameters and that we're, we're good to go. And, and next year, we will, depending on how things go for the rest of this meeting, I want to be able to get this mid-year in front of council at the end of January. But it takes considerable effort for two men to do, sorry, two men and a city manager to do, to get this done. So, because a mid-year should be done, in my mind, at the end of January. So, but I wanted to let you know, at least from, from our perspective, the city's budget, the 21-22 budget is, is working according to plan.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Carlos. I'm going to go ahead and open the public comment period, so that it's open, if you'd like to comment on this particular item, which is the Budget Projections and Adjustments, item H three on our agenda. You can raise your hand on Zoom, press start on the phone, or you can fill out the speaker card if you're sitting in the audience. I have a couple of questions. I don't know, Carlos, maybe you want to jump, well, I can ask you, I guess, too.
Sure.
So, just specific things, just trying to understand some things. So, I know that this was, you, you did answer this in an email, but then I had a kind of a further question, I decided, so the billboard, there was a shortage of eight, $8,300 from the digital billboard, and then the email that you sent out to said that that's been corrected and whatever.
Yeah, there, there was a, Carlos, can you take us back to the, one of the parks, the park slide? And so the digital billboard, we signed a contract back in 2019 with Clear Channel, and that contract guarantees us $100,000 a year in revenue from the billboard. There were some billing delays, and, and so as a result of those billing delays, we thought that we would not be able to collect that whole, that $100,000, and it would create a revenue issue for parks. That issue has since been resolved, and we're on track to collect the $100,000 that we are, that were due.
Was it a, excuse me, thank you, sir. So was it a billing issue on our side, or was it a billing issue from them to their clients that advertise on the board?
We did not receive one of the payments, so the, the 8,000 is the equivalent of the monthly allocation. We did not receive it for a period of time, months went by, and by now, we have received the payment.
Okay. Because I know that, per the contract, I mean, this is something that we, you know, battled for, I mean, originally, the amount was less, and we fought to get the most we could. And I know it states that if you don't pay on time, then there's a 5%, a 5% penalty, and then if it's not paid within 10 days, I think, it's like, it starts accruing interest. So I want to make sure that, you know, a contract's a contract, and if these people, this happens again, we need to make sure we're collecting on that stuff, and I don't want to give them a pass. You know, this money, you know, every dollar counts for that department, so I want to make sure we're not missing it.
Yes, and Mr. Solis' staff has addressed this issue with, with the vendor, and we're, we're back on track with.
So my other question was, on the water fund, I noticed we have $49,000 in charges for services, and we have $56,000 in fines with the, with the year-end projection of zero. Is this, and then we have some revenue loss grant, so I'm assuming these were, where we were foregoing collecting on some utilities during the pandemic, and then we got $66,000 and change for a grant to help offset that loss, but we're still dealing with a $38,749 uncollected? Does that sound about right?
That is correct.
Okay, but that's what it's from? It's from unpaid utilities because of programs that were in place to hold off on shutting people's water off and things, right?
The, the losses in revenue are a result of us not collecting the late fees, and the grant is meant to offset for the unpaid balances.
So, Mr. Heinz, do you foresee this as something that we're probably going to have a hard time collecting, and we're going to end up writing it off? Or do you think there's a good chance we're going to collect these, because they're penalties?
We'll see. Every, everything's, everything's related to what the governor and what Sacramento wants to do with these issues. And so I'm waiting to see, and we're still in a state of emergency. So when we come out of that state of emergency, that's when we start asking and answering these questions.
So my last comment, it's more, this is really a comment, but it's a question, I mean, I'm sorry, it's not a question, it's a comment, is just looking over all this, and I thank you for the breakdown and all this, Carlos and your staff and Mr. Heinz and everything. It's pretty straightforward, but, and the summary page is obviously is very helpful. But my thoughts are, again, kind of going back to the term earlier, you know, really what drove, what drove this position that, coming out of this, this unprecedented two years, that's none of us have seen in our lifetime, what drove this, us coming out of this a little bit, I wouldn't say unscathed, but we're looking pretty good, is, you know, a huge increase in sales tax, online purchasing, I'm assuming that's been talked about, like, a lot of people buying Amazon, so we get sales tax from the county for that?
There are three primary drivers, online sales, car sales, and construction. Construction is the materials and all those home remodels, people going out to home people, taking advantage of, you know, the pandemic time off and completing those projects.
Right. So with that being said, and, and on the, and on the expenditure side, you know, we've seen some, not, not every department, but some of the departments' expenditures have decreased because of, like, for example, in the Parks and Rec, because of just not filling positions. So I don't think those are maintainable long-term, I'm optimistic we can eventually fill those positions, so I, obviously, those, those, those savings are probably going to not last. And on the, on the revenue side, again, I'm very happy with what we're seeing, but again, very, very, very concerned with how sustainable is sales tax year-over-year increasing like that? I mean, we're not getting stimmy this money anymore, people aren't going to be out remodeling their home at Home Depot, you know, inflation's high, people are cutting back on spending, all of those, inflation drives sales tax upwards, obviously, there's that, but I just, and then with Measure R, Measure R obviously associated with sales tax, so again, Measure R, big increase, sales tax, big increase, those are huge numbers, right? I'm just concerned about how, how stable those are, and maybe, maybe we, maybe we, so maybe we, maybe, you know, as a society, we do kind of stick with a more habit of online shopping, maybe some of that remains, which we already do that, but how much of it, how, it'd be hard for us to really look back at the last two years and, and even make a guess of, like, what we think, what those trends are going to move forward.
So this is the reason we've hired HDL, our consultants, and this is what they do. They track sales tax, they track property taxes, and they track TOT, TOT. And so we have retained them, and we've had, we've always retained them. And so these revenue estimates that you're seeing for property taxes and sales taxes are coming from them. And so when we come back to you with the long-range plan that goes along with the budget, we'll have some more HDL information in hand, because these estimates are based on the five-year projection that they've given us. And Director Boring will show you that, but it's based on their estimates. And so that way, we as a staff, because frankly, I don't see how any staff can have the expertise to actually try to predict this, what's going on there. So this is the beauty of having HDL onboard, because they're constantly monitoring sales tax trends. I actually expect sales tax to be higher, because gas prices are higher. So they've been of immense help, they were with me in my prior city. I, you know, I'm not trying to sound like an advertisement for them, but they're, they're, that's always the first thing I look for when I go into a city, do you have them? Because that's one less, or two less, or three less estimates you have to worry about. So I understand your concern, but we've got trained and tenured professionals watching those trends, and the beauty of getting these financials in front of you all more frequently is that we are nimble now. And when those estimates change, we'll get those to you, and it won't be at the end of the fiscal year, it'll be at the end of that quarter.
Yeah. Hopefully, they'll earn their money. I mean, it, it's going to be difficult to forecast, I mean, I was talking to someone yesterday, and if anybody could have said that the housing market was going to be so much higher, you know, starting with the pandemic, I mean, nobody was guessed that. So I think it's going to be difficult. Something you mentioned segued into my last question, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Selling, is how are fuel costs going to affect us? I know, correct me if I'm wrong, but don't municipalities use like a, like a U.S. Department of Energy kind of matrix or something that they update? I'm just curious, I mean, we have police cars out, we have public works trucks, I mean, this has to be making an impact, and if this continues at these prices for another six months, which could be, is that being factored in here?
Yes, I can tell you, well, with the new budget, I literally told our analysts that we want to increase fuel projections by 30%. So, and that's based on the trends with AAA, and we actually operate with a fuel agreement, SAICOG actually, and it does a regional fuel agreement purchase, and so looking, you know, and talking to those kind of folks and stuff, that's about what we're projecting right now. And, but it is a bit of an educated guess, right? I mean, no one could predict some of these things, so where we end up, it's hard to say, but that's, that's about what we're seeing right now.
All right. Well, I, I mean, I didn't expect you to say, no, we didn't factor those in, but I'm glad to hear, just for the public who's watching, that these are, because these are things the public thinks about right now, you know, how much does a tank, to cost to fill a tank of gas? You know, that's like the number one concern right now. So I want to make sure that the bud, that the city is, you know, also being, and this, this is all core, this is all, goes back to my core feeling about uncertainty and not wanting to jump in too quickly to things because of these uncertainties. I'll feel a lot better when we see a report in a few months from now. So that's all I have at this moment. Does anybody else have a, a question for, on this?
I have a clarification question while this slide is up here. The mayor asked, will these losses of revenue, because we weren't collecting fines on utilities and water and so forth, be collected? My understanding, based on the state and federal emergency, was that we won't collect these fines, and the consumer won't be on the hook for it.
Correct.
Okay, ever. So we're not going back?
We're not going back in, in charging late fees or, you know.
Right. So if we collect this, it's collected from state and federal disaster, emergency, ARPA, whatever they decide, or they just tell us no?
Exactly.
Just wanted to clarify that, that we're not.
Also, one clarification on the revenue side, these are projections for the end of the fiscal year, for the remainder of the current budget, not long, long-range projections. Matt will get into detail about those.
Sure. Can you explain, I'm sorry?
No, I just, just wanted to get that one in while we had this up there.
And I'll wait for anybody else to have questions before I go into this other one. Okay. Let me, the solid waste shows a reduction of $57,000 in revenue. Why is that? Is that solid waste, that coming from our contract with our waste provider? And if so, why is that, why the decrease?
Those are our late fees. To our residents that wouldn't pay their bill, we would be collecting a late fee for solid waste.
Okay. Thank you. So the $160,000-ish from the Parks and Rec Department that was, went and spent because of the positions, that's being split in half, well, not half, but $60,000 is going to fund an increase in cost for special events and so on, and then the other $90,000 is being put into.
To the lighting.
Sure fall. Okay.
I have a couple of quick questions. The TOT income, I mean, that's expected to go back to normal, maybe within the next year?
We have, we have, or are about to contract with HDL, and so they will make sure, because they really have some really sleuthy ways of monitoring our hoteliers, and they will make sure that the adequate TOT is being paid, we're handling, we're handing the audits and all interaction with the hoteliers off to them, so staff isn't caught in the middle. And I have a feeling you'll see an increase in that number.
And some, some of the TOT was, the government was forgiving in timely payments, let's phrase it that way. And we'll, is some of that coming back around, where they'll have to make up what they forego or put off?
That's what we have to, we'll have to look into that.
Okay.
And, as I mentioned earlier, when the emergency is called off, and a lot of these questions will be answered, and because we're all going to wonder, you know, if we can't, you know, we're not, we're not going to get it from the customers, where's it going to come from? And so that's on the list as well. My concern is making sure that we've got folks who are focused on collection of TOT, and that way, staff isn't, staff doesn't have to deal with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
On the Measure R, you mentioned $200,000 over and above what was expected, correct?
Right.
Has that dug into what was anticipated balance? I mean, obviously, it has, but I'm not phrasing the question very well.
Very sufficient fund balance to offset the cost.
How, how much is in the Measure R Fund presently? Maybe just put it that way.
In fund balance?
Yes.
About 1.7, I would say.
Okay, so there.
Almost 1.8.
So there's, there's still, okay, no, no worries for fear yet?
No, and the increase in revenue, 391, this fiscal year offsets the increase in expenses as well. In speaking with HDL about the future of Measure R, this year is a unique year in terms of sales tax increases. Going forward, it's anticipated the revenues will increase by approximately 3.5%.
You say that's only this year because of COVID, or because of the new online tax sharing?
Sales, sales tax in general is unique to the, to the current year, based on the increased amount of shopping, online shopping, in-store shopping, construction, and car sales.
Okay, so kind of both?
Yes, it's a combination of all those factors.
Okay. That's all I have, thanks.
Another clarification while the Measure R is up here, and I'm thinking about it, in the larger spreadsheet of other tax revenue, there was a safety tax in there? Not a large amount, but I wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
That is something different than Measure R for anybody that's looking at this and has questions. That's a half-cent sales tax for safety from back in some other decade, right?
Correct, this is, yes, this is, this resides in the general fund, and this is the portion of the general fund revenues that funds police services.
So not to be confused with Measure R.
Correct.
Thank you.
Tina, do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Okay, again, for the public, the comment, general comment, not the general comment, but the public comment period for this item is, I have it open, so if you'd like to speak, you may do so. If we have no further questions from council on this item, I think, so how are we going to do this one, because I think there's, I don't know, what's, what's the plan here? Is there any questions, is there any additional questions for council on this particular item, for, I'm going to make sure?
No, I think everything's been covered, and I appreciate the staff taking about almost two hours with us. two hours with us, kind of going through this and talking about property tax and what's secured property tax and what's not. So thank you very much, I really appreciate that.
So again, my question is, do we want to, because we had? Sorry.
So, so Mr. Mayor, there are a number of adjustments that the departments have submitted, and those are all laid out in the general fund expenditure sections of the staff report. If council is accepting of those expenditure adjustments, there's also adjustments. Let me get to the staff report here. On page... Three of 13 begins the expenditure adjustments for the general fund. Two of 13 lays out the revenue adjustments. And so what we would be doing is seeking approval to make these adjustments to the current budget, and both on the revenue side and the expenditure side. If there are adjustments that you would like to address separately, i.e. the positions, we can do that. But if you're accepting of all the other adjustments, for instance, with the police department at the, at the bottom of page three of 13, unexpected expenses, Parks and Recreation, the request, $45,000 for staffing, $7,400 for program increase, and $16,000 for tree maintenance, and increased costs associated with events such as the city fireworks display and herd on the street. So, sorry, I'd have to say that, just, I can't wait to see that laid out. And then with community development, there are grant dollars that they're looking to bring in and spend, and so we'll need to recognize the, the revenues and we'll need to increase the appropriation authority so they can spend those dollars. Over on page four of 13, there's the litter abatement worker. Those dollars are already baked into Public Works' budget. And the reason that you see it in the sort of the general fund section is the ARPA monies are in a special account within the general fund. So we, we've got them isolated. And then with non-departmental, you'll see our request to move 900 or $670,000 out of that budget and back to the general fund balance. Same with the Parks and Recreation Fund. We're looking for approval to make the changes to those appropriations. And with Measure R, increasing the appropriation authority to address the overtime and the other issues that Carlos brought up. So there are personnel-related?
Yeah.
Issues, and there are other issues. So the question for council is, do you want to break each one of these issues out one by one, because they're all laid out in the paragraphs? Or do you want to accept all the sort of non-position-oriented issues and talk about the positions?
Well, there's one through five, we can just go individually, I guess. I don't know what?
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Resolution has five actions, okay? Four, four of them, one of them is, is, is the appropriations related to the positions that we just talked about. And then the other one is approving the revised budget with all of the adjustments and stuff. But obviously, that's going to change depending on whether the council approves actions two, three, four, and five. So there are five actions there. I, my suggestion would be to get through this the simplest, deal with step action two first, which relates to appropriations for personnel. And there's a list on attachment B to the resolution with, with all of those positions if you need a refresher. And then actions three, four, and five can then be made. I think those are more technical in nature. And then the, the fifth action would be going back to approving the revised budget, just because that, we'll know exactly where we stand with the final revised budget after those other things are voted on.
So the order you're suggesting is two, three, four, five, one?
Yes.
I just have one more, I do have one more question. The appropriations, Mr. Hines, the $160,000 taken out of the Parks and Rec to fund those other things, what happens if those positions get filled? Would there not be money appropriated for that?
Well, I'm sure that's a problem Director Solis would like to have, but right now, we just don't anticipate that's going to happen.
Okay, but we're, but the money would, if we move that money, it's not there, it's not budgeted then, right? Is that correct?
Well, if we move it and he actually, and he has an influx of people looking to hire, then I'll find some authority within the budget that you've already approved and move money around, because you've given me that authority.
I just don't want to make sure that, you know, if a unicorm comes along?
Or, or?
That we're not ready for it.
Or herd on the street?
Yeah. Okay. All right, so starting with number two, which is the one that regards the positions, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I have to close, first of all, we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. We're going to now close the public comment for this item.
So one question, before we, as I said before, I don't have any problem breaking these things out. In some total, as this adjustment sits, our general fund expenditure, as in this total plan, expenditures go down $445,769. And our, our income goes, you have a slide for that? Our revenue goes up $692,000. So we are swinging way to the black.
Over a million dollars in, in a net impact to the general.
And this is with everything baked in as it stands, positions and all?
Well, I'd certainly be fine with approving it as it is. Matter of fact, I'll offer that motion.
Okay, you want to read the, the motion is to, there's a motion on the floor to approve the agenda item as is stated. Items one through five collectively, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, the resolution as it's written in the packet.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Lozano. I would like to propose an alternate motion to approve items two, three, four, five, and one. Actually, I want to, I want to, I want to take out the position one, I want to, my alternate motion would be to approve without funding the senior accountant position. I don't know what the verbiage should be on that.
You've already approved it without funding.
But I think, I mean, I think what you're saying is approve as presented with one amendment, which would be to not appropriate funds for the senior accountant position that was previously approved by the council.
That's correct.
Exactly.
It was previously approved a little while ago. That's my motion. If I don't have a second, then the motion will die.
I have a second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. We vote on the second motion first.
Correct.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
No.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
No.
Mayor Farmer?
Yes. Motion approved three, two. So moving on to item four now, the long-term financial plan update. Mr. Hines?
Matt Boring, our finance director, will present this report.
Can I ask a question real quick? What about the litter abatement?
Because that position wasn't approved previously?
Right.
That's?
It automatically comes off of it? Okay.
Hey, good evening. I'll do my best not to put you asleep. They put me at the end. Give, give the last guy, the guy with the last name Boring at the end to talk numbers. Okay, so this is the long-term financial plan update. And this is a counterpart to the mid-year budget and other items discussed tonight. So the next time you see this, it'll be adjusted because it was based on all the appropriations included in the mid-year budget. And this is a preliminary look forward based on, on those changes. Our forecast model, we're projecting the revenue and expenditure projections. We're using our moderate, most likely projections with a conservative bias. It's a 10-year forecast from fiscal years 22, 23 through 20, 2031, 32. It is a general fund-only model, and we're using transparent assumptions that we're going to go over shortly. And our assumption rationale, revenues, expenditures are based on our conservative estimates. We want to err on the side of caution and not show too rosy a picture that we don't think is really going to occur. We utilize expert projections when available. We talked about HDL previously. We utilize their service for property tax estimates, sales tax estimates. And one of the benefits of using them is their, they contract statewide, so they're able to see sales tax estimates statewide, and they, they have economists that they hire, so they break out the different segments of sales tax components. And then they're able to give us, you know, local estimates of, you know, this segment is projected to increase so much. And then we, they work with our economic development department. And so since they're able to see statewide information, if we tell them, you know, we're planning on a certain business to open at a certain date, they can give us a realistic estimate of, of what revenue we can expect from that. And we also use the CalPERS unfunded liability projections from our actuarial assumptions. So they're kind enough to give us an idea of how much money they're going to charge us every year. And in future updates, once we have the HDL transient occupancy tax estimates online, we'll include those in the model. And just a reminder, this is the most likely scenario based on what staff knows today about the future. And our revenue assumptions do not include new development. And going over the assumptions, the screen doesn't show it as, as well as the printed version, but the property tax and sales tax lines in the slide are, are a green hue. So we just want to differentiate those from the other ones. So those are the ones that, you know, we're using the expert estimates for, for the years that they're available. So for property tax, for the five years that we're showing here, we broke it into two screens, so you can actually see numbers. The 22, 23 projection is a 6.39% increase, and that decreases to 4.9% increase for the remainder of the year shown here. Sales tax, we're projecting a 4.2% increase in the next fiscal year. And that fluctuates between 3.4% and 3.8% for the next four years following that. And those are based off the current assumptions that we have that were presented tonight. For our transient occupancy tax, we put in a conservative 2% estimate for now. Other taxes and general revenues, we're projecting a conservative 2%. And just for an idea of what some of those are, those are franchise fees, interest income, the paid grant. Our planning building fees, we just put in a 1% conservative estimate for now, because those kind of fluctuate with the market. So we're taking what we have now and projecting that to increase. Police grants and fees, which is a little misleading because it's almost all fees, we're projecting a 2% increase, and the majority of that's reimbursement. We have cost-sharing agreements for police services for like the school resource officers. So those are primarily drivers for that segment. And then our inter-fund transfers, which are the amounts other funds transfer to the general fund for the cost allocation plan for the central services that they receive. And we're projecting a modest 1% increase. And the next slide just shows the, the remaining years. So for property tax and sales tax, these are the years beyond the estimates we get from HDL. So we've just baked in a 3% estimate, which is less than the previous years. And the remaining categories have the same funds or amounts discussed previously. Moving on to our expense assumptions, we have fewer categories. So salaries and benefits for fiscal year 22, 23, we projected a 6% increase. And that's with the hopes of, as COVID winds down and we get to more normal operations, we'll have fewer vacancies. And then fiscal year 23, 24, we projected a 5% increase, more along the same, and just a 3% increase beyond that, just for anticipated cost of living adjustments. Those also include like medical, dental, vision, CalPERS costs that increase annually. For operations, we projected a 3% increase going forward. The interesting category is the pension unfunded liability. Like I mentioned, we get these figures from CalPERS, and, and they fluctuate greatly. So for fiscal year 22, 23, they're projecting almost a 12% increase. And then fiscal year 23, 24, a 9.34% decrease. And that's just based on the way that they amortize the unfunded liability. It's kind of gets, you get like a 20-year stack. And so each year, something falls off, something new comes on. So you'll see, it kind of goes up and down every year for the years that they give us projections for. And then our capital costs, we projected a 1% increase. We looked at kind of a five-year history for the general fund for this. And it's volatile, mainly just based on when we have projects. So we went with the current amount and just a minor increase to kind of even it out over the period of the model. And then the transfers out category, we're projecting a 1% increase over the term of the model. And those are mainly the general fund contributions to the Parks and Rec Fund and the lighting and landscape districts. And then these are the remaining years for the expenditures. And I included the long-term financial plan. I wasn't expecting to see it, but if you look it up online, hopefully you can view it up large enough to see it, and it should be included in the packet. So when you look at it overall, there are some positives. When you look at our revenue, we're projecting an annual increase of almost $600,000. And for expenses, we have two separate categories. The, the one in the middle, right here, those are our ongoing expenses. And then we've separated expenses utilizing fund balance below. And the expenses utilizing fund balance, the majority are carried over from the prior year, so they were funded with prior year revenue. So those are our encumbrance carryforwards, capital carryforwards, and supplemental appropriations that council approves throughout the year. So over the life of the model... I lost my number, but expenditures are increasing. And the main numbers to look at are your general fund surplus deficit. So we start with our 21, 22 revised budget as it was presented. So the original budget had a little over $100,000 in general fund surplus baked into it. But based on the budget information that was presented earlier tonight, the fiscal year 21, 22, and the remainder of the model, has more than $1 million of general fund surplus estimated. So we'll just go over a few charts, kind of show where the, the revenue for the general fund comes from. So the vast majority, 40%, is property taxes. Sales tax make up about 20%. And the next largest category is your other taxes and general revenues, 10%, and planning and building fees. And those are the fees we charge for services, are about 10% each. Looking at our general fund expenses, and these tie to the, the middle category of expenses, the ongoing ones. Salaries and benefits are by far our largest expense in the general fund at approximately 56%. Operations are at 25%. Our unfunded liability for fiscal year 21, 22 is 8%. Transfers out to other funds are approximately 7% and capital is 4%. And here's a chart just showing, on top, the blue line is our estimated revenue annually, and these are shown in millions. And so our expense is clearly below the blue line throughout the life of the model, so the, the model's projecting a good picture. And before we go on to questions, there are some caveats to the model that I believe the city manager would like to cover.
So can you, Matt, can you go back to the, the, the actual plan? So I just want to just speak generally to the public. You see this plan, and it, it creates a certain sense of relief, the fact that there aren't red numbers down there and the total? The fact that there aren't red numbers down there in the total general fund surplus deficit line item may create a sense of, you know, comfort, but so, and to be honest, for those folks who think we're sitting here flush with cash, we're not. Okay? Because there are a lot of things that need to be done. And again, the narrative budget report will spell those out. Some of those things we have to deal with is correcting the LLDs, fixing parks. We've got labor contracts that are expiring in June. The city does not have a compensated absences reserve, which I find shocking. The city does not have a vehicle replacement program, which I also find shocking. These are things that ex-finance directors find shocking. And so we've got a lot of things to put in play. And for those watching tonight, if you thought there was consternation on the council tonight, keep tuning in, because the next few months are going to be interesting, because we've got to do, there's work to be done. And by the way, gentlemen, all of these initiatives I just read flow through the finance department. I'm just saying, okay? So I want to make sure that everybody goes away not too comfortable, because there's work to be done, because we have successfully, at least during my tenure with you, addressed cans that have been kicked down the road, and we're going to keep doing that for as long as I'm with you. And so we've got some things to do. I got a list of about eight to 10 items that I'll be bringing before you with the narrative budget report. And Matt, thank you. Carlos, thank you. Mr. Mayor and the council, thank you. This is the first financial presentation that I've seen before, a legislative body that I did not have to give. And so for me, this is sort of a milestone in my career, so it's nice to see, it's nice to see you guys doing the work, so I'm happy to see that. Well done, Matt. Well done, Carlos.
Do you have any questions?
Do we have any questions from the council for Master Boring?
Mr. Mayor, the only eyes see the property tax for the next 10 years, it's growing, right? So it's done by the HDL, that consultant. So first thing is, why is increasing 6.3% in '22, '23, and after that is decline?
Because we have, they have the data. They have current data, and they're able to tell what that increase is going to be for '22, '23. They have that data in-house.
So that's me, that's there, we don't have that information, why?
Exactly. '23, '24, and beyond, they are just speculating based on what they've seen in the past.
Okay.
You know, taking out the pandemic and where they see it going. Chances are, when we see the next HDL report, that 4.9 may change to 3.5, it may go up to 5.2, but it's based on HDL's research.
Okay. The next question is, you know, the percent increase, it depend upon the property, existing property, and also including their new development coming in?
I think it's based on existing property and where they think we're going. So they're aware of all of our annexations and our development, but as to how much credence they're putting in, how much credence they're putting on that in affecting this estimate, that I don't know. And
You know, the new development, I don't know how they look at the data. New development is also depend upon the council, how they react to adopt any annexation. If the council want to be smart growth, I believe that figure maybe can go negative according to their report. That's why I'm just All right, and that's it, that's my question.
Matt, is there any, I just was thinking of something here. There's been talk, which I don't know if it'll come to fruition, but there's been talk about freezing the gas tax, you know, to kind of curb gas prices. I don't know if that's actually going to happen, but I was just curious if that happens. I mean, obviously that'll, Mr. Heinz mentioned sales tax earlier from gas. I know it's one little tiny piece of our sales tax, but again, just wondering if, you know, there's all these things I keep, I keep thinking about, so.
If they're talking about freezing like the state portion of gas tax, I wouldn't have a huge impact to general fund, because like the road maintenance are in separate funds. So if they're freezing, I don't know if the state portion is, say, 19 cents a gallon, that wouldn't affect our sales tax.
Like Measure A stuff, right? It's Measure A? Is it Measure A?
I don't think that, Measure A is a sales tax also.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But our legislature has soundly killed the idea. Yeah. So that is not going to be a sense of relief. Does any of the council, could I open a public comment on this item? In case there isn't, is there any public comment, Tina?
No public comment.
Okay. Any questions from the council? We continue with questions?
Yeah, I'd like to touch on my favorite topic.
CalPERS?
Yeah, CalPERS. He knows. So, you know, if they change by a percent, I mean, it hurts, or it really helps. I don't know if anybody's looked at your 401K lately, but I don't think their investments are doing as good as they anticipated two years ago, that's for sure. And that number's pretty high on this page, you know. I really don't look out too far on something like that, because that's really going to be based on things they do year to year, to me. Certainly not five years out. What's your general sense about that? Because I'd like to see that, you know, the city do more, and I've said it repeatedly, I think the city should do more to keep that as a lower number. It's the cookie jar that everybody likes to dip into, because it's easy in some respects. And I also understand that like tomorrow's dollars, you know, the money you put in that, the money that goes to that problem is cheaper tomorrow than it is today. So, I mean, I understand some of the advantages, but I still really dislike it if that question even is a question.
There are, there are instruments that we could use to, you know, to deal with pension costs. There's one we did over in my former city, I can't remember the name of it, but essentially it was a savings account. It was another reserve that we use for pensions, and I can't remember it right now, but that's an option. But the thing is, we still have, there are things we still need to do before we can start setting up that reserve, but there are instruments out there that we can, we could
We can do similar with what we do for the other post-employment benefits. You can do like an irrevocable trust where we could put certain money in, and then you can draw down that money to offset increases in future years. The difficult thing with the unfunded liability is, even if we were to magically pay off all of our unfunded liability today, there's no guarantee that you won't accrue unfunded liability in the future, because it's based, it's several factors of CalPERS meeting their investment targets.
Right. I understand that. My concern is if they don't hit their targets, and they ask us, you know, there's going to be a percent change, that grows in a hurry, right? And so that's, you know, the kind of things that you mentioned. If you were just to start them and start ramping them up, at least do something proactive about it, because I also understand that, you know, it's at 24, 25 million, but that doesn't mean, and we're better than most cities by a long shot from my understanding, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't be proactive about it. And then I'm, in this, you know, with the inflation, the way the economy is, they're going to be raising interest rates, and that's, you know, from my understanding, that's the right thing that the federal government's going to be forced to do if they want to get inflation under control, and that's not really kind to unfunded pension liabilities and the things that CalPERS is trying to do to make that easy on us.
If it makes you feel any better, I know at least historically, we prepaid at the end, or beginning of the year, so we get a discount for doing that. I think we get like 3% discount per year by prepaying it.
That's awesome.
Yes.
It's still a bigger number.
Well, well, next time I'm up in Sacramento, I'll drop in and lodge a complaint on your behalf there, sir.
I just have a couple of comments, I think, that, you know, I've always been used to, and not here in this city, but in a prior board I served on, five-year projections, and those were, you know, even then, you know, when you get out to year four and five, even in times where, you know, the economy was somewhat stable, it was a pretty good target, but you could, even at year four and five, you kind of start guessing, right? But I appreciate the tenure, and, but I do, I do look at it and say, you know, kind of after year five, who knows? Any one of those lines could change dramatically, and, but, but I think this is good for, for us to see as we move forward in budget development this year, as well as for the community to see that we are putting some thought into the future. I've been on this council for three and a half years and haven't seen that at all, you know, and, and we've had COVID and other things going on that, that we were having to address directly in staff lists, but this is great work. I appreciate it. I never ever heard of a year as a, as a policymaker where Pers came and said, oh, our discount rate's going to go up, or down, right? I mean, they always come back and say, oh, we're going to increase it a little bit. One of the things, the one question I had is, and you may have covered it, but where do we see the projection for like things like insurance? Was that like workers' comp insurance and liability insurance and things like that?
So on the current model, the, the workers' comp insurance would be, fall under the salaries and benefits.
Okay.
Because we just take those as a whole and increase them.
Okay.
And then liability would be in the operations.
Okay.
And then I just wanted to mention, this isn't a guarantee that, you know, in year 10, we're going to get what we're projecting now.
Right.
But the direction I've been given, and what the city manager's given us, is this is something that we're going to update regularly and bring it back to you. So you get, you know, as you mentioned before, instead of once a year, you get information, it's, here's what we have right now, you know, the next time we bring you the budget, and then the next mid-year budget, you'll get updated models, so you'll see kind of where we're trending, and if there are changes to the sales tax or property tax estimates, we'll build those in and show you what we're projecting in the future at that point.
Yeah, I greatly appreciate it, and I know the community does, because, you know, I said it earlier in the meeting, and I won't belabor the point, but I find it appropriate to say now, is for many years, that question of financial stability has been a huge question. I mean, we found $4 million one time that was unaccounted for. And so, so I appreciate the forethought and the work that you guys, your group has done, including the work of the city manager. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Well, I'll share your sentiments, because I was lucky, I came into a great situation where we already had a great team, and they already did a lot of the legwork to start
Any questions, any further questions from council? Any public comment, Tina?
No public comment.
Okay. Well, with that, it's a non-action item, so we have no public comment, no further questions from council. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Ms. Heinz. All right, moving on to item I, communication. Do we have any communication this evening?
None this evening.
All right. Item J, city clerk's report.
Nothing.
Item K, comments by staff. Mr. Heinz?
I have nothing. I think I've spoken too much. I'm going to start with Director Selling and see if he has anything. Sorry, Mike. It's easier on the Zoom.
Armando first, but along with his upcoming event for the first Saturday market, I'm trying to finalize the, you know, the details on providing the shuttle service for that, so I'm hopeful to have that in place in time for the first event, so. Other than that, I don't have anything else tonight. Thanks.
All righty. Thank you, sir. And definitely, let's get to Director Armando Solis, and he's the party man now. We've got the market going and
Thank you for asking if Parks and Rec was included in any positions today. I appreciate it.
Hey, hey, you, you
It's coming up.
All right. Careful what you wish for.
I just wanted to remind everybody that our Saturday market starts April 2nd. We have our touch truck event that we're including with that. We have 35 vendors currently signed up, and we look forward to a successful season on that. Do you guys have any questions about what's, what we're doing on Saturday, or anything?
Can you give us a brief?
We're just, we'll have the elementary school choir that will be performing. King Productions will be DJing in the afternoon after the choir. Again, the touch truck for the kids to see all these vehicles. I believe we have over 25 vehicles currently registered and ready to go, so it should be a good event. And by the way, I'm sorry, this rain today is going to cause more weeds, and we are really on it. We do really work seven days a week on our landscaping to try and keep up, but we are trying to keep up on it.
Just what you needed is a little more rain than a bunch of sunshine following, right?
Yeah, that's not a good thing for us.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Let's go with Chief Kalanowski.
I think I'm going to disappoint everybody. I don't think I have anything for tonight. I know we had a request to do something for the extravaganza out of town at Historical Society, and we continue to work on that. We have some staffing challenges. We probably get some volunteers out there, but we'll move on that here. We're still trying to figure it all out, but beyond that, I think that's all I have for tonight, so thank you.
Community Development Director Craig, I hate to make you walk all the way across
All right, council members, and I know they're trying to finalize the details on Saturday. There's going to be a group effort between the Beautification Committee and then Horizon Church to do a cleanup. It's at nine o'clock at Horizon Church, and I'm sure we're going to be working on C Street, Lincoln Way, and I'm not sure where, but I think it's going to be a big group this, this weekend, so if anyone could come out, nine o'clock at Horizon Church.
Going to miss that one. The biggest one so far, and I won't even be there.
Human Resources Director Stephanie Van Steen.
Yes, good evening. I just wanted to thank both of the high schools in Galt for inviting us to their career fair. It was nice to see it come back in person, and Human Resources did have a booth there. Our HR analyst, Roxanne Agnano, was there with a market employee, Chelsea Garabey, so they were advertising our various part-time temporary positions that we have open, but it sounds like it was a very good event.
It was a great event. I was there too, so that was, that was great. Finance Director Matt Boring.
I just want to thank everyone for sitting through a night of budget charts and numbers and not falling asleep.
Sitting through a night of boring information?
Oh.
No pun intended.
City Attorney Frank Splendario, follow that.
I will not pile on Mr. Boring. No further comments.
All righty, thank you. I just wanted to, again, tell Matt and Carlos, job well done, but the one person I forgot to thank was Stephanie Van Steen, who drove all of these new position descriptions and worked with the department and worked with the finance folks in pulling this together, so thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, I turn it back to you.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to comments by city council members, feature gen items. We'll start with our vice mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank you all, staff, and especially thank you all the director there here for more than four hours in the chamber. Thank you very much. Thank you for the media, and also thank you, Mr. Heinz, as you gave us a very clean report. And I also like to thank you, anybody watching, citizen watching tonight. It was a tough decision sometime tonight, but we have to look balanced. We have to like, personally, look at the taxpayers' money, and also we want to support every department what we can. And that's tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilman Papinero.
I just want to reiterate that I am more convinced than ever that, from my time here and the time shortly before, that we are headed in the right direction, and we are light years ahead of where we were a couple of years ago. So thank you to So thank you to basically all of the directors, finance department, and city manager for putting together a very comprehensive, cohesive, and clear budget adjustment plan going forward. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Vanderburg.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to give a quick congratulations to all of our local sports teams and individuals and wrestling and basketball. The city is very proud of you, as they should be, and you're setting new standards, which is something we're trying to do here, I hope. Thank you to all the staff, honestly. It's, I know it's a lot of work to put together all those numbers and, and put up with us all the tons of questions. It probably gets a lot harder when, during budget season. So thank you very much for your efforts. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lozano.
Yeah, it's been a crazy last couple of weeks with the meeting with staff, preparing for this meeting and, and, and whatnot. So I want to thank the staff, everyone that piped in and, and allowed for me to ask some kind of crazy questions sometimes. So I appreciate it. Did have an opportunity to see the softball, Galt youth softball opening day on Friday, last Friday.
Monday.
Yeah, last Friday. And so that was pretty cool to see all those kids out there. And, you know, we talked earlier about things that we could improve on. And, and I think that was one step in the right direction was having the, the youth sports organization nonprofit begin to run that, that piece. And so it was really neat to see all the kids out there and the parents and grandparents. And even saw our city treasurer out there watching his granddaughter. And so it was, it was fun. Just, lastly, just a reminder for everybody that the state of the city is this Thursday at Roosters. And so I look forward to probably getting there a little bit late. I have a SAGCAG meeting and a couple of things I want to be there to vote on. So hopefully that timing works out well. And again, thank, thank everybody in the community for, for those who are watching and employees who have reached out and provided clarification. So thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you. Yeah, to all the staff that, especially the finance, that did all the work preparing this. Do appreciate seeing all this and although we have some pretty intense deliberations on some things sometimes, I just want to thank you for making as clear as possible. Kevin's comment about how things look really good, it's like, I'm glad that the three of us did all the heavy lifting before you and Jay got here. Just joking. Yeah. So Mr. Vanderburg mentioned the basketball. I was able to attend a couple of games, seeing Liberty Ranch kind of make a run for it. Unfortunately, lost their key player at the end, but it was good to watch. And the opening softball day was asked to throw out the first pitch. So that was, that was fun. It was a lot of pressure. Get out there and they go, you have to throw underhand. I'm like, oh. And then kind of threw me for a loop. But again, a long night, a lot of financial information. I actually wasn't that tired, but thank you for everybody bearing with me for my, my allergies are killing me. And I would have rather had to not talk tonight at all, so. But thank you, everybody. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 10:14 PM. Good night.